School Board Meeting, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The next item on the agenda is Public Comments. For those that are at home and watching, you can share Public Comments by sending an email to Again, that's Public Comments, all one word, at sign sa26.org. The, so anyone who does have Public Comments tonight can go up to the microphone, which is right here in front. Make sure the button's turned on, state your name and local address for the record, and Public Comments is open.
Hi, good evening. My name's Carla Monte. I live at 101 Front Street in Merrimack, New Hampshire. I am a mother of three in this town, been here for sixteen years, and I love this town. MYA softball majors director, volunteer. MYA softball coach, volunteer. New Hampshire Lightning softball coach, volunteer. I don't complain about a lot of things, but I'm very passionate about sports and for our young student athletes. So I am, for the record, just gonna state the letter that I've already submitted, and thank you, Sinda, for your responses for those. So first and foremost, thank you all for your time, energy, and thought put into this school year. In regard to the new, you know, this very new 2020-21 Student Athlete Policy, however, I don't know if I need to recite it for the record, but I will. That reads, "Student athletes that make the roster of a Merrimack High School team are prohibited from playing on any other team, including in a different sport, outside of Merrimack High School. This includes MYA, Merrimack Youth Association, club teams, AAU, outside tournaments, showcases, et cetera. This rule is in effect for the duration of the athletic season. Failure to abide by this requirement will result in the athlete's removal from the Merrimack High School athletic team." My questions, I have a lot, are why, why, why? Was this a major issue this fall, when students were playing school sports and other non-school team sports? Because it was happening. And I don't think the cases were that astronomically high. I can understand private institutions prohibiting such things. Parents are paying buko bucks for those kids to go there, they're paying boarding fees. But a public school? I don't understand. I really don't understand why, how a public school is able to prohibit such things. Especially as a taxpayer, I don't understand how that can be done. I've also kind of been advised to ask if families are gonna be reimbursed for fees that they have already paid to other team sports and organizations. Hockey, being one of them, my son plays. It's a very expensive club sport. If you are not a goalie, your tuition fees are up to thirty-two hundred dollars for a season, and that's not even a whole year, okay? That's like September to March, maybe, okay? And then you pay extra for tournaments and all that kind of stuff. It's a lot of money. You know, are we not trusting the fact that other teams are following the New Hampshire Safe Sport Guidelines issued by the governor? I coached softball. It was a big deal this summer. We thank God that Governor Sununu passed the guidelines for our girls' softball to play this summer. Granted, there was, you know, restrictions to play were very different from what we're used to, but, you know, our teams were able to play, play in tournaments, do what they love, and do it safely. So I would hope that we trust these other organizations are following these guidelines, because if they weren't, then they'd get shut down, okay? You know, it all, this new thing, this new policy here almost seems like you're telling us that you're gonna prohibit, I mean, you might as well tell us that, you know, our children are prohibited to do art and music lessons, karate, religious classes, you know, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. I mean, can these athletes, these high school athletes, go to their parents' gyms where they have memberships to work out for the sport that they're playing in, in the high school or middle school? I mean, you'd almost have to insert that in there. You know, and I'm really concerned, too, on kind of how, really, have we examined any other, any other statistics besides COVID cases that are affecting our kids here? I mean, mentally, these kids, a lot of them, you know, from talking to certain families, you know, they're having a tough go with this, all right? And now we almost want to take another thing away from them. So I really would be interested on how depression in adolescence is going up because of all this stuff, that they can't do anything, almost. And really, I'm just, you know, we have a saying with my kids, you know, whenever they hurt themselves, we're like, ah, pain is a feeling, feelings can be controlled. I mean, it's kind of a joke in our family, you know? Really kind of telling our kids, suck it up, it's all right, you're okay, you know, nothing's, you know, you're not gonna die, you're okay. You know, and to me, fear, okay? Fear is a feeling, and feelings can be controlled. And I really just want us to stop controlling our children with it. I want to stop punishing our children with it and stripping them away from the things that they enjoy. I want us to embrace team spirit during this time by, you know, allowing our families to choose both. You know, not just one thing, choose, our families should be able to choose. You know, let families have the freedom of choice regarding what to do for their children, okay? Where do we seriously and rationally draw the line, okay? And I just really, please do not pass this. For the kids, it's all for the kids, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I push this to stop?
Sure. And Carla, because you are here, you're okay if we don't read your email into testimony? I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, of course.
All right, thanks. Any other public comments?
Thank you very much, okay. So I'm speaking to you tonight as a parent of a middle school athlete, as well as two younger Merrimack athletes, as well as a director of MYA softball here in town. I've lived in Merrimack my entire life, and athletics are incredibly important to me, much like Carla. I have a great passion for athletes and athletics and coaching and volunteering and having kids play sports is critical to their development, and it's very important to me. So I'm here to request that the school board reconsider and potentially retract the decision of the high school, middle school athletic departments newly implemented rule prohibiting student athletes from participating in any outside athletic programs during their sports season. The first issue I have with this new rule was the way the rule was disseminated to the parents of athletes. This was not sent in an email, or posted online, or sent home with students in order to contain any specific justification why the decision was made to implement this rule. All of the numerous parents I have spoken with only learned of its implementation via word of mouth or through social media, and that includes me. Additionally, the only notice from the schools was surreptitiously posted at the bottom of the athletics webpage. Implementing a significant new rule in such a manner is frankly unacceptable. I understand the intent of such rule for safety purposes, and I'm not here to downplay COVID concerns. With the current rise in cases in New Hampshire, there's no doubt that it's the worst it's been, and safety of students and school staff should be a foremost consideration. However, it does not appear that implementing this particular rule examined all of its potential short-term or long-term consequences. I can't address all of those here with my allotted time, but I'd be more than happy to discuss them in the future. The bottom line up front, there's a high probability this rule will decimate many school sports teams. Most athletes, particularly those on high school teams, participate, participate in other non-athletic activities as well. Many athletes participate with outside organizations, and their families make significant financial commitments to those programs. Many of those programs run close to, if not year-round, and by the time a school season comes around, the athletes have already made a great time and energy commitment to those programs. Now the school is asking those students to abruptly drop them to participate in school athletics. This is not fair to the student athletes nor their families. To be clear, this is in no way trying to circumvent the NHIA rule that school sports come first. I completely agree with that rule, and, and that should be followed, but this particular rule does not address that. The conversation's already begun in my house about participating in such programs. There's a program my daughter's participating in right now, which the school does not offer, which runs through the spring sports season. She also wants to play school sports in the spring. Now I have to ask her to make a decision if she wants to continue a program, which I have a significant financial commitment to, to decide if she can play both activities or which one she has to choose. What other things does this rule potentially prevent student athletes from participating in? Can they play in a band or be active in scouts? Can they even have a job? I believe this rule does not appear to have been thoroughly thought through. The school district already successfully, very successfully navigated the fall sports season with a very reasonable plan in place in the event of COVID exposures. The school seemed to handle each of these cases very well, with minimal impact on teams and seasons, at the same time maintaining a high degree of safety. Barring kids from other events will not prevent the spread of COVID. Having a common sense, reasonable plan in place to act does. The system in place seems to have been very effective. Please do not try to fix what isn't broken. With athletes and families being forced to decide where to participate, it is likely many will go to the places where they get the most training and can develop best as an athlete. Oftentimes, unfortunately, that is not always a school program. When athletes, especially the best ones, make the decision not to play for school, others will follow. This will effectively prohibit Merrimack from competing in many sports, and there will be a limited number of players. Athletics are a key component of school spirit, esprit de corps, and community. Losing sports programs will eliminate that. In closing, I'm asking that you ensure such a rule barring students from participating in outside activities be stopped, and you reconsider that ruling. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. And would you please restate your name and address for the record? The microphone was off, so I just wanted to make sure.
It's Bob Powers and two Edward Lane in Merrimack.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
I'm Melanie Curran. I live at 138 Middlesex Road here in Merrimack. I have three students within the district. I have a high schooler, a middle schooler, and a student that attends Reed Ferry. All three of my student athletes play a sport in this town and have played sports since they were three and four years old. They've played soccer and lacrosse and basketball and football and baseball, and have enjoyed every minute of their experience, both on school teams and playing for MYA recreational teams, as well as playing for their club and AAU teams. I think the situation that we're in is unfortunate tonight. I wholeheartedly respect the work that the school district and the school board has done over the past year to ensure that our kids receive a safe education. And I respect that we are trying to put as many mitigating factors in play to keep those kids safe. However, the decision before you tonight affects students not only that do play in outside clubs and showcases, it affects the students that are here in town who may not play for travel teams, who may not make their school team. It affects our Merrimack Youth Association recreational program because we're forcing students to choose. If my son goes out for the basketball team and is cut and does not make the basketball team, and his only option is to play rec basketball, he plays rec basketball. But by forcing a child to choose between their school team and Merrimack youth team, you are essentially taking out a large number of students from playing that recreation program, therefore prohibiting my own child the same opportunity he would have been afforded otherwise. In addition to that, while I agree a lot with what Bob said about cases being on the rise in New Hampshire, cases are not on the rise within our school. Every email we have received from our superintendent and every email I have received from our school principals continue to tell us that we do not have spread within our schools, that we may have community transmission, but we do not have student-to-student or teacher-to-teacher transmission. We have been assured on multiple occasions that this virus is not spreading within our schools, but in fact out in the community. This past fall, the school board set a precedent and listened to the parents who decided that they wanted to make the decision about whether or not the children should participate in football and cheerleading. It was the recommendation of both our superintendent and our high school athletic director that we not play football, and parents were given the choice to choose. By sharing their voice, by writing in effectively, that recommendation was changed to allow those students to play. So we've set the precedent that parents should be able to make those decisions and take on those risk factors for our children. By taking away the opportunity for our children to participate in club and AAU organizations and making them choose between their high school, and I'm going to assume, middle school teams, we are taking away their opportunity to be showcased for college, to get noticed in different areas, to, if they are invited by a college to participate in a showcase, they're unable to do that. And as some of our other members have, have mani, or have mentioned this evening, we have, as parents, substantial financial, I don't even know how to say it, substantial financial, whatever. We've, we've, we've put out a lot of money for our kids to play on some of these teams, and that is our choice, absolutely, and I take that responsibly, that responsibility on hold heartedly. However, we are trying to give our kids the best opportunities. And so I have to agree with the people that have spoken before that by making kids choose, you're essentially forcing them to choose the teams they've always, already committed to from, on a financial basis and on a commitment basis. Some of these kids play for these club teams all year round. And so they're in a situation where they don't even really have that choice. And we are taking away their ability to participate in what should be something that is fun and community-building for, for them. So I guess one of my biggest questions is kind of the why now? Why is this policy being put before you now? Why wasn't this a policy that was put before us at the beginning of the school year, knowing sports was gonna be something that we were going to have to contend with? Like Bob said, all, all fall season, we have played other towns, we have put ourselves out there, we have mixed with other towns and other cohorts of people without what I believe to be a significant issue. I could be wrong about that. But I just, I, I feel for these kids. I think that we can all agree that the situation we've been in the last nine months has taken a mental toll on all of us as adults, but certainly for our children. I don't want them to have to choose between playing with the clubs that they've been committed to for years, and also the teams that they've committed themselves to, and the pride that they show by being a Merrimack athlete. So I'd just like you to consider everything that was said and consider the public comments that have gone into tonight. I respect your decision regardless of how it turns out, because I know you're all working very hard, and I appreciate that. But please don't put the kids in this position. Please, please go based off of, of what you've set as a precedent in the fall and continue to let kids, kids play this, this winter and spring. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Charlie Dodona. Live at 58 Eric Street here in Merrimack, New Hampshire. And the reason I'm here is related to the sports policy. First and foremost, I think most people have already stated, financial commitments have been made in a pretty large way by most of us. Two, college placement. These kids play club, it affects college placement. They're supposed to play club and school sports. I have a junior right now in the midst of college placement, and this adversely affects her. Emotional distress. These kids have gone through a lot, and adding this to their plate right now is a terrible thing. Lastly, it's an unfair application of policy. Where does it stop? Is it, is it volunteer? Is it work? What else are we gonna do and take away from these kids? So we're at a point with this policy that gives these kids no hope in what they can do at school and their athletes. So I request that you take this back. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move on to item number three, which is the Merrimack School Board Review of Winter Sports Recommendation. Mike Susie.
Just give me a moment to set up here. Uh, no, I have not turned it on. It's still booting up. Which is weird. Doesn't usually take this long.
It's always when you need it.
Yeah.
We could move to the approval of the minutes, if we wanna go ahead and get that one done. Okay, I'm gonna fast forward to number eight, and that's approval of the October 5-2020 non-public, October 19-2020, October 28-2020, November 2-2020, school board minutes. Do I have motion made by Andy? Second by Shannon?
We're taking them one at a time, or are we?
Yeah, we'll go one at a time.
Okay.
So yeah, let's, a motion for the, that first motion was for the October 5-2020 non-public and October 19-2020 minutes. Would you, Andy revalidate that, October 19th only?
So what are we doing, the 5th or the 19th?
We're doing the non-public of the 5th.
You have to do them separately.
Okay. The non-public.
So we're doing the non-public on the 5th.
Okay, yeah. Made by Andy, second by Shannon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none? Was that an aye? Lori? No, that was probably an abstain for you, right?
Yep.
All those opposed and abstain? And that would be Lori. So that motion carries 4-0-1. The next one is the October 19-2020.
So moved.
Public minutes, made by Shannon, second by Andy. Any comments or changes? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none? Was that a, in favor, Lori? Okay. Okay, the motion carries 5-0-0. And then the October 28-2020 minutes?
So moved.
Made by Shannon, second by Andy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any changes? I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none? The motion carries 5-0-0. And then the November 2nd, 2020, made by Shannon, second by Andy. Any changes? No. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 5-0-0. So we got that housekeeping item over. How about the consent agenda? We'll go to item number nine. Okay.
Thank you. Tonight on a consent agenda, we have one nomination. That's Melissa Delay, special education teacher, Merrimack Middle School. And we also have a consent agenda. Approval of the policy, school volunteer policy, I-J-O-C. And that is all.
Motion made by Andy?
Certainly.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the motion carries 5-0-0. We could go on to item number five, which is the 2019-2020 Budget Year in Review. Matt Chauvinel, if you're okay with that?
I certainly am.
Thank you.
Hold on. There we go. In 2019-2020, that was a very interesting end to that year, which, which provided- In 2019, 2020, that was a very interesting end to that year, which, which provided to us an interesting series of events that led up to a, a budget surplus. What I tried to do is you can't see it too well on this copy that you have, but the white sections are actually, and maybe it's me being just colorblind, like a pale green kind of color, but they rendered a lot nicer on my computer than they did in the copy machine. So what I want to do is talk about, because it was mentioned here at the board before, you know, what was the effects of COVID on the budget, both positive and negative, depending upon your point of view. So the, the first item, and you can, this is just an overview, you can flip to the second page if you care to, is the amount of money we spent from mid-March to the end of June 30, 2020, on both wages and salaries for the transitional team that we had together. You recall, we had a couple of presentations where we had the different teams from different areas present. There were wages involved in that and then we had begun the process based upon those team recommendations of procuring COVID personal protective equipment. It was just the beginning of it right there. The next section on page two, which should be in pale green, but it looks like it's in white, is items that are, were affected directly because of COVID and the way we shut down the school year. You know, you look at substitutes, this is the first year I've ever under-expended the substitute account. That's because, you know, we didn't need them because for a long, very long time, we were remote or we didn't have school and school ended early, so hence there was a surplus on that line. Same thing with custodial salaries. I mean, we had a lot of work for the custodians to do, but however, there, due to the $600 a, a week unemployment compensation deal that was going on through the federal government, it was exceedingly hard to get custodians, so we were exceedingly short-staffed. Support staff salaries, couldn't keep enough paras on board because of the fear of COVID and what, what that would do. Athletic salaries, same things. Professional development, well, if there are no conferences and everything like that going on, there's not a lot of places to go, there's not a lot of opportunities. I don't think the, the PD world was ready for, for such a, an evolution of how they would, to produce products, given that short period of time. Obviously, transportation, you see a surplus there. We received, we did pay our contract in full, but we received a fuel credit because the buses weren't making runs, but they were out there delivering meals, they were out there whenever we wanted them, they were out there to serve the public and community and they were at our disposal. In order to, in order to, and this will transition to something later on that we're going to be talking about, in order to qualify for the CARES grant money, we had to continue as a matter of rule through the DOE to pay our contractors. We couldn't stop paying for transportation just because we weren't using them by doing routes every single day. So we had to keep them on the payroll, but STA worked out a, a fuel credit and a savings for us of about, you know, two, $200,000 plus dollars. Field trips, again, self-explanatory, no place to go, no reason for field trips. Same thing with travel. Driver's education, the driver education program was completely shut down because of close contact in the driver ed car. You know, you couldn't socially distance in a driver ed car unless you had a Hummer, H1. You know, in that way you could be five feet apart, but they don't have those in this state for driver's ed, nor, that'd be kind of a little bit dangerous, I would say, too, also for a new driver. So utilities, you know, this is something that we had a savings in because, you know, we, we turned down the thermostats, we shut off all the lights, we did what we had to do and hence we had a savings. Now, conversely, in the budget that we're currently in, part of the recommendations of DHSS, DHHS, is to run your HVAC system 24/7. So 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We used to shut it down after like five, six o'clock and just kind of leave it lay and now we're running it 24/7, so that's going to be an increased cost of which we don't have the full, full extent and extrapolation of the numbers as far as what that's going to look like for the entire year at this point in time. You know, FICR, retirement workers' compensation, that was a savings because of the lack of wages paid out. Equipment repairs, didn't have many there. Telephone, you're not in there to use the telephone. Supplies, didn't need a lot of supplies. You know, meetings, additional equipment, those were all, I don't want to call them savings, but underutilized resources that we did not have to gather up and deploy due to the situation we founded in, found ourselves in due to COVID and that amounted to $2 million, $2 million. Also, in the yellow, you had administrator salaries, that was a savings due to a, a rehire in 1819, I think we all know what that is. And professional staff savings, too. There was a big shift in our demographic as far as professional staff goes. I think around 35 to 40 teachers came and went and the ones that came in were on a much lower level on the, on the salary chart than we had anticipated. And then, you know, administrative salaries also with, you know, support staff. In the orange, you know, customarily, we build the budget based upon what we think we're going to have in the pipeline at, for 2019, 2020, we start that in November of 2018. So, you know, Heather, Heather Barker does a great job of negotiating contracts, looking at alternatives and building programs in-house to, to save money in out-of-district tuitions. That's a savings of $800,000, which is, you know, fairly typical. We, we budget for special ed in case we need it based upon known cases that we have being stepped up one grade level. That changes every single year. Some years we can have very good years as far as money goes and some years we can be very challenged and a few years we dipped into the special ed fund in order to cover unanticipated out-of-district placements that we had not budgeted for. The blue section is just to kind of give you, this isn't really COVID, COVID expenses, but this is, you know, retirement incentive. We had a retirement that we budgeted for that did not come to fruition. Health insurance, we had a, a savings there due to the change in demographic. Even though we did build this year's budget based upon existing people, we did this for 19, 1920 and we still had a savings. So that nine and a half percent GMR for '21, '22, I'm going to predict it's going to look more like a 3% when we actualize it and we build the budget. So it's not going to be as dramatic as you think it is. Bonded debt, people always ask me, how come you don't refinance your debt every single year? Well, yeah, we do. And there it is. And there's the savings. And I can go back 10 years and every single year, you're going to see a savings from bonded debt because we go back, we have an interest rate that we booked when we first floated the bonds and every year we go back and we go and we say, okay, rates are coming down, bond bank, what are you going to do for us? And this is what they do every single year. So this is something that, that comes on board and shows up. Legal, this is all legal, this overage is. It's, you know, I think, I don't have to say too much about that. We all kind of know what that is from 1819 as far as the over expenditure in legal from $38,000. And then, you know, transfer capital reserve, that was about it. On page three, we had a $315,000 revenue surplus. We had Medicaid, special ed aid and interest on investments. Because we switched over to a positive pay system through TD Bank, where we actually push our checks out and they know exactly what checks we have and there are files that are going back and forth, it's basically for fraud prevention, but because we did this and they are aware of what we have out there, so no one can, people are really clever when it comes to fraud now. I remember sitting with Keith Pike of, he's a vice president of government and banking for TD Bank and he showed me all the different ways they can alter a check and you'd never know it. And so what this does is it, if you go to present a check and it's not proper, it doesn't have the right payee, doesn't have the right amount, it doesn't have the right number sequence, it'll get kicked back. And so this is a safety thing that we took into account for, you know, our own fraud prevention and because we went that route and it was a lot of work to set up, our interest rates on our investments have increased dramatically. You know, we used to be getting, getting 3%, I mean 3%, we used to be getting maybe $3,000, $4,000 a year, we're looking at $50,000 to $60,000 a year. So every little thing that we do has, has an action or a reaction and we try to always make those things be into our favor. Sometimes they are, but more often than not, they, they are, they are. Food service, that wound up the end of the year with a little bit of a surplus of $50,000, even though we did fund most of the meals for that period of time. I want to thank the food service personnel and Dave Zicki especially for being out there every single day and STA for delivering meals. So we started off the year, last year with $32,000, we have revenue and expenditures, they're both on the low side, but it all worked out in the end and we wound up with a, a fund balance for, that should say 18, yeah, 1819, for, at $50,000, $50,000. So it's, it was an interesting year. All the backup is there if you want to look through it at your leisure and email me some questions. I don't think we, well, you can if you want. I don't know if we want to go through detail at this point in time seeing Mike is all queued up with his hot topic over there, but I just want to say, you know, one thing in closing, this $4.7 million surplus went in its entirety to reduce the December tax bill that I believe everybody in town of Merrimack has gotten. Now taxes, I'm not sure how much I can say because there's a 10-day right of rescission for the town council on the tax rate. The tax rate went down. All I can tell you, school portion of the tax rate went down 39 cents a thousand. So 40 cents a thousand, let's call it that, $300,000 house, 120 bucks a year from the school rate that the taxes went down. That's kind of, I think, a high point that I will end on and I'll get any questions that you have either now or, you know, later because, you know, I'm just dying to hear what Mike Susie has to say and everybody else is. So this is just for the record, I'll be doing a redo of this in front of the budget committee Thursday night and you're welcome to, to, you know, view that or come to that meeting or do whatever you please, but this is going to be on the docket for them. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. Any questions? I just have one request, which is to put this out on the website.
Yep.
So anybody watching from home, if they want to be able to go through and look at it.
Yep.
And then as far as, I don't have my calculator, I want to put you on the spot, but approximately what percentage of our budget is attributed to that under-expended amount?
Oh, we, we spend around anywhere, we spend around 98% of our budget, so I think this year we did around 97, just off, off the top of my head.
Okay.
Because last year the surplus was 3.2 and this year it's 4.7.
Okay.
So it's extra a million and a half in there, so that's probably what it is, yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, so the, we'll go back to item number three, which is Merrimack School Board Review of Winter Sports Recommendation. Mike Susie.
Well, first let me say thank you for your patience and flexibility as we work through our technical issues here.
Happy to run interference for you, Mike.
Thank you, thank you. Always seems to happen in the worst times possible. So that, that's how I wanted to start. The second thing that I would say is that, you know, hopefully I only have to do this one more time. You know, I'm hoping that, you know, 2021, 2022, we can come back, get back to some semblance of normalcy and provide full opportunities for kids because that's what we all want, right? So hopefully this will be the end of it and, and we, we won't have to look forward any, any further than, than this, this school year. But in the meantime, we, we're here, we are still in the midst of a, of a global pandemic and we, we need to kind of work through that as best we can and still provide kids with some opportunities, with some risk mitigation. So this will look somewhat familiar to you. This is the activity risk levels, you know, based upon what, what kids do in, in particular sessions. This, this was presented during the fall as well. These haven't changed much and in fact, they haven't changed at all. So obviously anytime you're performing a skill-based, skill-based thing or a workout on your own, that is the safest way. And then anytime you are competing with a team against another team outside of your geographic area, that is the highest risk. And then there's everything in between, between, you know, small group practices, team competition and then obviously competing against people in your geographic area. So these risk levels haven't changed from the fall to now, they, they remain the same. And then the potential risk by sport is, is kind of divided into three categories as well, low-risk, moderate risk and higher-risk sports. And it really depends on, you know, how much, how much physical contact is there, how much shared equipment is there? Those are really the two key pieces here. Is there a possibility within that sport to social distance? And if there is, then it would be deemed a lower-risk sport, assuming that there aren't sharing any equipment, right? If they can maintain some social distancing, but they have shared equipment, or they can't maintain social distancing, but there's protective equipment in place for them to mitigate some of the risk, then that would be in the moderate risk category. And then obviously if there is no social distancing and no protective equipment and none of that type of stuff, then that's going to be a sport in the highest risk category. So that's kind of how we divide those things up. And so when we're looking at winter sports, this is how we're categorizing the sports that we offer. So when you're looking at the lower-risk sports, you're looking at alpine ski, you're looking at bowling, you're looking at swimming and you're looking at track and field. All of those sports can be done with social distancing without shared equipment. So pretty straightforward. Moderate-risk sports would be gymnastics, the relays in swimming and the relays in track and field. And the reason for that, the reason why that has elevated to moderate is because there is shared equipment there. They're passing a baton, right? So, or not so much in swimming, but they're in close contact with one another, there's no social distancing there. So that's why that would elevate to moderate risk. And then gymnastics, obviously there's all kinds of shared equipment, right? They're, they're going from one apparatus to another. So that's where those would be moderate risk. And your higher-risk categories, and this is a little bit different than what the National Federation would say, because they wouldn't put basketball in the highest-risk category, they would put it in moderate risk. I disagree with that. The state disagrees with that. The NHIA disagrees with that. Ice hockey, similar. They would consider ice hockey in the moderate-risk category. I think we've all known that there's been a lot of issues centered around ice hockey in the state, well, not just in the state of New Hampshire, but in New England over the last several months. So we've moved ice hockey over to the highest-risk category as well. Spirit, it's no different than it was in the fall. You know, if it's competition cheer, there is no social distancing and they're all over each other. It's the nature of the sport. And then wrestling, you, you don't get a more high-contact sport than that, where they're just, there, there's literally no space between the competitors. So that's where the risk levels come from and that's how we've categorized them heading into winter sports. So the rationale hasn't really changed. You know, we, we don't really want, we don't certainly want to cancel high school sports. There will be something that will take its place. You know, and our, our kids have been, as, as, as our public comments have mentioned, have been participating in sports all summer, all fall, whether it's with the high school team or outside. That's going to continue. There is a cost associated with that, as some of our families have mentioned, there is a significant cost in, in some ways for, for that. So, you know, we, we don't want to take away high school sports because that's going to make it hard for some members of our community to participate, just based on economics. We don't think risk would be necessarily mitigated by taking sports away because again, they're going to be competing. And in some cases, not only will be, they be competing, but they may be crossing state lines. So you're talking about the highest risk of the highest risk, right? So that, that's another challenge, too. And then again, club programs are, are ready and eager to fill any vacancy that we provide them. So that's kind of the rationale behind why we want to continue. So that's kind of the rationale behind why we want to continue offering high school sports. So our recommendations for the winter would be that we would like to participate in alpine ski, basketball, bowling, gymnastics, ice hockey, indoor track and field, swimming and diving and winter spirit. We feel that, you know, we can safely mitigate some of the risk associated with all these sports. We can't eliminate them. There's no eliminating these things. And, and if the fall taught us anything, it's that even if you are participating in a sport at the lowest risk category, the virus doesn't discriminate. We had cases in cross-country. It doesn't get more safe than that from a level of risk. And, and yet we still, we still had a case within cross-country. So the virus doesn't discriminate, we're just trying to make the environment as safe as we can and we believe that we can do that with some universal protocols for these particular sports. So let's talk about the hot button issue here, which is this rule that we would like to implement. And I say that we would like to implement and I know that it is on the high school website, I believe it's also on the middle school website. It's also built into our family ID accounts as something that families need to sign off on. And the reason why it's there prior to board approval was because I didn't want to throw it out to them after registration had already started. We needed to start our registration process several weeks ago, just to kind of get a handle on who's going to participate in winter sports, who's not. Now, a lot of our families wait until the last minute to sign up, but we still need to get the information out there. So this is out to the community sooner than you had seen it necessarily, simply because we needed the families to understand that this is something that we are proposing. If this passes, this is what you need to agree to. All right? So that's why it's out there first. So now let me talk about the why. There's a number of different reasons why we feel that this is a good policy to have for this school year. And I really want to emphasize that. It's for this school year. I have no desire to control people's outside of school lives. Trust me, I have a hard enough time controlling my own. But we just feel like where we are with the virus right now, we need to put some extra measures in place. So the first reason why we came up with this policy was that we did have an issue in the fall. Not well advertised, not well known, but we did absolutely have an issue in the fall that impacted an entire program, where we did have a student test positive due to an outside club sport exposure that shut down the entire program for two weeks. Not only did it shut down the entire program for two weeks, it required those kids to be quarantined from school for two weeks, which to me is the bigger issue. We want to make sure that we're able to provide the education that we're, we've put forth for these kids. That, that's, that's our primary goal. And if, if there's an exposure on a team and we have to quarantine them for two weeks, then they're not getting the same access to their education that they would have otherwise. So that's the first reason that we thought that this would be a good idea to visit. Other things are, number one, everybody knows this, the numbers are increasing in the state. They're increasing in our community. And yes, we are lucky right now in our school systems and I hope that continues. You know, I, I pray every day that we continue to have good luck in our school systems and our athletic programs and everything. But we're praying for luck is, is really what we're doing here. The, the cases are increasing. We're going from an environment where all of our sports, except for one during the fall, were outdoors, to an environment where all of our sports, except for one, are indoors for winter sports. That's a significant difference to me. You know, the, the fresh air, the, the, the space, all of that stuff is really impactful when you're outdoors. You're not going to have that same environment for winter sports because they're indoors. And lastly, we don't control a lot of the environments that our teams will be practicing and competing in. The nature of winter sports is that we don't have the facilities on campus to have an ice hockey rink where we control everything, bowling alley where we control everything, gymnastics facility, swimming pool, mountain to ski on. We're relying on all of these outside venues to make sure they're doing all the right things too. It's a lot of faith and it's a lot of trust. And I believe everybody's doing their best effort. I don't doubt that and I don't deny that. But my only concern is our kids and trying to keep them safe, as safe as we can, and try to mitigate as much of the risk as we can. Because ultimately, all of these sports have a level of risk that if we decide to move forward with them, we're willing to take. But if this was cut and dry, I wouldn't be here presenting. We would just be moving forward like we have in years past. But it's not. It's a challenging situation for everybody, it's a challenging situation for kids, it's, it's been a challenging situation for me, it's all I think about twenty-four-seven. So it, it, this is, these are not easy decisions, these are not easy recommendations. I don't want to withhold opportunities for anyone. But at some point, we do need to make a decision on how far we're willing to go from a risk standpoint. And if we're willing to go farther, we, we'll, we'll go farther. But this is one of the things I think we can do to help mitigate some of the risk. Again, it's not going to prevent everything. It may not prevent anything. But I do know for a fact that it would have prevented one shutdown and one quarantine during the fall. That's a fact. I don't know what it'll do for the winter. So that's kind of the rationale behind it. And, and, and I understand the public's concerns. I share a lot of them. Again, I, I, I'm not in a business to try to control everything, it's, that's not how I work. But my role and my job is to provide the best recommendations that I can to move forward with sports safely in Merrimack. And so that's what I'm trying to do. And this was one of the things that I felt could help to mitigate some of the risk. Some of the other universal protocols are going to be very similar to what they were during the fall, where we're going to continue with our screening process, which it's not perfect either, right? You know, we're, we're going to ask the questions of the kids and the coaches every single day, we're going to take their temperatures every single day. That's not perfect. It's not going to catch any asymptomatic kid or coach, it's not. But maybe, again, we can mitigate some of the risk. And I'll say this, that, thankfully, this, this didn't come to anything negative, but we did have to send some kids home from practices during the fall. And we sent a couple of kids home from, before they boarded a bus to a game because their temperature rated higher than a hundred point four. Thankfully, they did not have COVID. Thankfully, they were healthy and fine, but we couldn't take the risk. We couldn't take the risk for our community and we couldn't take the risk for the community that we were sending our kids to. So we're going to continue with that process in all of at least the Division One schools and I'm sure the other divisions are doing the same thing, they are doing it also. So this is a shared responsibility across all of our schools from our athletic programs. We also track attendance every day and this has been tremendously helpful when we have had a case, to figure out who definitively needs to be quarantined and who does not. And, and the challenge with high school sports, with sports in general, is try to determine who within that team was within six feet for ten minutes or more at any point in time in a practice. You can't do it. It's not possible. So what we made a decision to do is when we do have a case, we shut the team down and they're quarantined for fourteen days automatically, because we can't figure it out. Keeping a daily attendance record has helped us for those kids that may not have been at a practice or two, leading into that exposure. So those kids, at least, the team is still shut down and they can't practice, but at least those kids that weren't at practice and weren't exposed, they still have the opportunity to access their education traditionally. In whatever hybrid or remote mode that they had, they can still do that as they had planned, right? And that's, that's huge. Because when you're talking about, you know, shutting it down, a program for two weeks, you're not just shutting down the program, you're quarantining these kids from school for two weeks. So having a, a good attendance tracker has been tremendous. And then face masks. I mean, we, we all know this, we're all wearing them, right? It's a huge piece of this. And, you know, we, we've had some slip-ups in the fall, there's no question about that and we got on the kids and we got on the coaches for it. We're going to try to be more diligent about it this winter because the stakes are higher. Again, we're indoors for most of these sports, so the stakes are going to be higher. And so there are consequences for kids and for coaches who are not consistently wearing their masks. You know, the first one would certainly be a warning, I want to give everybody a chance to, to make amends and do the right thing. And then the second time, they would be suspended for a period of time. Could be two days, three days, two games, I don't know yet, but, but they would certainly be suspended. Because this is just too higher risk to take right now, in particular now, because again, all of the numbers are going up. Cleaning and disinfecting is huge too. And, and this is, this is going to be a, a significant challenge for winter sports, more so than it was for fall sports. And I will give all of the credit in the world to our volleyball kids and coaches. I thought they did the best job of all of our teams this year and they had to because they were the indoor sport and they had so much that they needed to clean and disinfect on a regular basis. When you're thinking about volleyball, think, people think about, oh, they, they've got the shared ball. Yep, they do. They got to disinfect the net, they've got to disinfect the standards, they've got to disinfect all the chairs that they sit on, the, the, the rack for the ball, everything. And they did it diligently and safely and efficiently every single day. And so that's what we're going to be asking all of our teams to do this year. And we don't control some of the facilities, so that's not going to be our kids' responsibility necessarily, but we're going to be in conversations, we already have been, with all of the venues that we use to find out how can we help them. You know, in particular, if you're looking at a, a sport like gymnastics and, you know, you've got kids using apparatuses, I'd like to see some of those cleaned, not necessarily between use, but more frequently than once a night. Right? I, I just, I think it's safer for kids overall and especially when you're dealing with, you know, multiple teams using that facility over the course of a week. So, you know, a, a definitive cleaning and disinfecting schedule is going to be developed for all of our teams, all of our sports, so that we can keep things as safe as we can. And I think one of the big things that we, we did in the fall and we're going to continue to do in the winter is close the locker rooms. Shut them down. You know, if you've ever been into our locker rooms, I know some schools have much larger locker rooms and can space out a little bit more, ours is tiny. There's no way that they can social distance in there, so we're just not going to use them. We will open them up immediately after school for the kids that are in school that day if they need to change for practice, but outside of that, they're, they're closed and, and kids will not have access to it. And I think that's going to help in particular with a certain sport that we'll talk about in a little bit. Again, similar to what we did in the fall, our teams are going to practice separately. So where we have multiple teams in certain sports, like say basketball, we typically have a varsity JV and a freshman team at both the girls and the boys, they're going to completely be separate. They're not going to cross over at all and I know that caused some issues some, for some people in the fall because we're, they're so used to kids moving from one team to the next. We're not doing that this year. We just can't. You know, we're trying to keep them separate so that if there is a case on say, the JV basketball team, it's not going to necessarily impact the varsity basketball team or the freshman basketball team. It's just going to impact that one team. You know, again, trying to mitigate some of the risk as much as we can. Again, athletes have to have their own water, we're not providing that for them, we're not going to deny them water, but they have to have their own water jug, water bottle, something to fill it up with, so that we're not sharing. We're, ask them not to share any personal equipment, any clothes, any of that stuff. And obviously we want them to disinfect all their practice gear on a regular basis when they get home from practice. I think that's tremendously important. We will have some additional sports, sports-specific protocols for certain sports. Basketball will have some, ice hockey will have some that aren't universal, not going to necessarily get into all of those tonight, but there are some very specific sports-related protocols that we're going to have in place as well. Scheduling is going to be very similar to the way it was done in the fall, which we're going to try to regionalize things. If you decide to move forward with winter sports, I would ask for some flexibility with respect to scheduling. And the reason for that is, is, well, there's a couple of reasons. The first reason is, in a couple of our sports, we're not in Division One, we're in Division Two. So that's going to create some challenges. Now, we're going to probably still try as best we can to schedule, even though we're in different divisions with some of the local Division One schools in those sports, but it may not always be able to happen. So I would ask for a little bit of flexibility there. The good thing about where we're located, we're, we're so centrally located that we could be in a lot of different regions. So it makes it a little bit easier. I know that during the fall, the seacoast schools all had a thirty-five mile radius with which they could travel and that was it. Well, give me a thirty-five mile radius and I can travel to a lot of different schools, right? So just because where we're located. So I would just ask for some flexibility there. And then some of our sports like bowling and gymnastics and, and alpine ski, not everybody offers those sports. And so again, I'm, I'm going to need to have a little bit of flexibility so that we have different opponents that we would, we would participate against in, in those sports. Again, we're trying to limit the time of, of travel and, and minimize the exposure over a smaller geographic area, really is what we're, we're trying to do, is trying to keep it as small as we can. And then again, very similar to the fall, we're going to be one of the first schools, I hope, to make a decision on this. I know there's two schools that have already gone all-in for, for sports. Salem is all-in and Pinkerton is all-in. Everybody else is presenting to their boards either this week or next week, so we'll start to have some, some determinations, but we can't build schedules until we know who's, who's all-in. And so if things get drastically changed, I will certainly let everybody know from a scheduling standpoint, but I, I don't foresee that. Excuse me, home games. Again, very similar protocols for home games as we had during the fall. Again, locker rooms are closed to everybody, so there'll be no use to the locker rooms. Fans will be limited. And we're probably going to limit fans even more so in, in the winter than we did in, in the fall. Again, simply because we're looking at indoors as opposed to outdoors. If you recall during the fall, what we did is we offered four passes, season passes to, to every athlete on every team. So they had four family members that could attend their home games. I think we really need to reduce that to two, maybe three for our indoor sports and some of them, we might not be able to offer it at all. You know, some of the venues for gymnastics, like our home venue for gymnastics, there's no viewing area. It's a small little lobby where you might be able to have two people in there socially distant and that's it. Swimming, most of the venues, if we even can offer swimming from a, from a competition standpoint, because we don't really know that yet. Again, nobody's going to be allowed on the pool decks, so if there's no viewing area outside of the pool decks, then, then families can't go there either. Bowling can be a real challenge because the bowling alleys can get pretty packed. You know, I'm hoping they envision something different. So I'm thinking two, maybe three passes for each athlete for our indoor sports, maybe none for some sports, just simply because the venues can't accommodate it. But if you're looking at, you know, the Merrimack High School Gym, the reason why I'm leaning towards two is if we move forward with, with the proposed sports that we have. If you, if you, if you're familiar with the gym, when you walk into the gym, there's a set of bleachers on the right-hand side when you walk in, there's a set of bleachers on the left-hand side when you walk in. The left-hand side is where the teams sit. We're going to keep those bleachers closed for home games. I don't want any fans behind the, behind the, the teams. Not to mention, I need to space out the teams a little differently anyway. So those bleachers will be closed, that's going to limit our capacity right there. And then we have one other set of bleachers, if you, if, straight across from where you enter, which is the student section typically. If we're going to offer cheerleading, then I want them to have the ability to cheer at home games for basketball, which means I need to keep those bleachers closed also because I can't have the cheerleaders right on top of the court. So now we're talking about just two sections of bleachers on the right-hand side that are open for families. That's not a lot. And to keep people spaced out appropriately, I think, I think two is probably the limit. We might be able to get away with three, but I think two would be safer. So that's, that's where, where I'm thinking. No visiting fans. We've already agreed upon that. We've already agreed upon that in, in all of division one anyway, that we're not going to have visiting fans attend our home games, um, this year. So that's already decided too. Visiting teams are going to conduct their screenings just like we do before they board their bus so that they know that they have nobody that is exhibiting any symptoms or that has a temperature. If they do, they're not sending them, so that's going to take place at the visiting team's home site before they board the bus. Visiting athletes won't have access to the locker rooms either. Uh, they've got to come dressed and ready for competition. And they have to wear face masks when they're on campus. And in reality, and we'll get into this a little bit later, um, face mask is going to be required in, in a couple of sports across the board, uh, even during competition. So. Uh, again, face coverings, it, it's such a big issue, but all, all coaches, game staff, you know, when you're thinking about, you know, basketball and some of these other sports, we have people that work the clock, we have people that work the official score. They have to, they have to obviously be there. They have to wear face coverings, uh, face masks the entire time while they're there. We will have hand sanitizer and disinfecting wipes at, at all team benches and at the scorer's tables that they can wipe things down when they're done. When you think about how things are going to work from a game standpoint, if we have multiple games going on, on the same day, say we've got a JV basketball game and then followed by a varsity basketball game, which is typical and traditional, right? We're going to build a little extra time in between. Typically, it's ninety minutes. So say the JV game typically starts at five o'clock, the, the varsity game would start at six-thirty. We're going to push that out further. So now we're talking either, you know, four and six or five and seven. We're going to build in an extra half hour. We're going to clear the, the fans out, bring the next set of fans in. We're going to clean and disinfect in between. And so we're going to buffer some time there to get all of that stuff done. Again, handshakes, mingling, all that kind of stuff between teams, uh, before and after the games is out this year. Everybody's done a really good job with that all fall. They're pretty accustomed to that at this point in time. When the game is over, the teams are just going to go back to their benches, gather their stuff and vacate the building. Quick and easy. And again, no concessions and no fundraising, uh, during home contests, uh, for this year. Okay, so we had a couple of sports that were in the high-risk category that we still are recommending that we play. And so one of them is, is basketball and, and here's part of that rationale. First thing is basketball's been ongoing in the state all summer and all fall. And to the best of my knowledge, no reported issues. So now again, we didn't participate in those things, but, but they were offered and, and again, no, no reported issues. AAU, like many sports, will replace high school sports if we don't offer it. And they're more than willing to take people's money to do it. So we, we want to make sure that our kids still have ample opportunity. We believe that we can make the environment safer because we control everything. We control the venue. We control the equipment. We control all the safety protocols. So I think we can, we believe that we can make it safer. And then this is one of the sports that we are requiring masks to be worn, not just on the bench, but in play. And I was going back and forth with this all weekend before this presentation because I was, wasn't really sure. Basketball really concerns me from a risk standpoint, just because of the, the close contact that takes place during a basketball game. And so trying to figure out how to best mitigate the risk, I felt that masks would probably be the best choice. There's no research out there that says masks are not a good idea in these sports. So I'm going to hang my hat a little bit on that. There's also no, no research out there that says they're a great idea either. But nonetheless, there's nothing that says it's bad, so I'm going to, I'm going to hang my hat on that. And then we had a really good conversation today in our division one athletic directors meeting and we went back and forth about it too. And, and as a division, we've agreed to mandate masks in competition. So every division one school in basketball will be wearing masks. So it's not going to be a case where Merrimack is wearing masks, but Salem is not. So that's going to be consistent across all the division one schools. And so that's why I think we can, I think there's, there's a good rationale there along with all of the other protocols to move forward with high school basketball. Ice hockey is a bigger challenge in a lot of ways. Number one, we don't control the venue. So we're, we're, we're really kind of stuck with their, some of their protocols. But we still believe that we can make the environment safer. Can't completely eliminate risk, but we can make it safer. And, and one of the first things that we can do for ice hockey, because I really do believe, it, it does seem like there has been at least one case of potential on ice transmission. But the, one case out of all the cases in ice hockey that have, have come up over the last several months. Most of the cases, the experts believe are taking place either in the social gatherings before or after or in the locker room. So one of the things we're doing with ice hockey, and this is going to be a challenge for them, is we're closing the locker room. No locker rooms. So similar to all the other sports, they need to come dressed and ready. Obviously, we don't want them driving with their skates on, right? That would not be safe. So, but they can put their, the skates on when they arrive to the rink. And the visiting team would be the same way. And, and this is going to be consistent again, certainly across division one ice hockey. Now, we, we participate in division two ice hockey, but out of the division one schools, there's like ten division two ice hockey programs and we're all in the same meeting today. So, so more than likely, it's going to be consistent across all division two and all division one ice hockey. The locker rooms are going to be closed. We closed them for football. It didn't create a problem. We're going to close them for ice hockey too. I think simply by closing the locker rooms for ice hockey is going to mitigate a tremendous level of risk. Those locker rooms, you think our, our high school locker rooms are small, go into ice hockey locker rooms. They're even smaller. You talk about, you've got twenty kids and a couple of coaches, they're literally shoulder to shoulder on the floor. They're all over each other. So by closing the locker rooms, I think we can really mitigate the risks to that sport. And then unlike football, one of the major ice hockey manufacturers, CCM, has manufactured a mask that is very good and can be worn during play, uh, for ice hockey. And so we have already purchased these masks in anticipation that we'll have a, a, a positive response tonight. If we don't, we don't. We have masks. We'll use them for something. Maybe we'll use them for lacrosse or football next year. I don't know. They attach to the helmet. Uh, they sit a little bit off the face so that the kids can still breathe. But they still will take away some of the droplets that would transfer during regular competition. So these will be mandated, um, for ice hockey. So I think we can, between closing the locker rooms and requiring masks, and, and in reality, you, you almost have to wear masks in games anyway because the state is already mandating that they have to wear masks on the bench. And the way ice hockey shifts go, you, you can't possibly put it on, take it off, put it on, take it off, but you just can't. It, it's, it's even harder than football from that perspective. So having them wear it, um, through the duration of the, of the contest, I think makes the most sense to do so. So based on those and again, all the other, um, universal protocols that we have in place, we think we can make ice hockey, um, safer for our kids. Spirit, we had a successful fall spirit season. We really did. And, and, and part of that was because we, we were talking about, it was mostly game day cheer, mostly. They did their one-state competition and it was virtual. So that made things a lot easier. And I'll say this. I, I go to all their spirit competitions and this was the most relaxed I've ever seen them in their home gym, on their home mat, with their home fans performing. Their score didn't necessarily reflect it, but I, I, it was the best routine that I've seen them perform in a long time. And I just think it was partly because they were so comfortable. There's no pressure. Right? They didn't see all these other teams perform ahead of them, right? There was, there was no this anticipation. They were home. And so I think, you know, we can provide them not only with the state competition virtually, but I know that some schools offered during the fall, some virtual competitions as well. And so we would look to enter them into a couple of those too, so that they have more than one opportunity to compete during the season. And then the only change between the fall and now, winter, for cheerleading is like, I would, I would like to have them have the opportunity to attend cheer gym once a week. We shut that down out of an abundance of caution during the fall. And, and I think it did impact their routine. One of the things that makes cheerleading difficult for us in the high schools, we don't have some of the equipment that they use to train their tumbling and some of that stuff. That's what they go to cheer gym for. Um, and we took that off the table for them. And I think it was the right reason in, in the fall. But I think we can reinstitute that once a week for them during the winter. In particular, because we have all of these other teams that are also using outside venues. It's not like there would be the only one. In the fall, they would have been the only team that, that utilized an outside venue. Now we have a multitude of teams that potentially will be using outside venues for practices. So I think it makes sense to give them the opportunity to go back to cheer gym once a week and work on those skills. And I listed in the PowerPoint, the, the cheer gym protocols that they have in place for sanitizing and disinfecting because again, we don't control that. So. So based on, on those things and again, all the universal protocols that we had in place, we feel like we can make spirit safer and move forward with that. Which leads us to wrestling. And it always seems to be one. And it, it kills me to not recommend a sport. I just cannot, in my mind, figure out how to make wrestling safer. I, I, they're just, they're on top of each other twenty-four seven. If you've ever been to a wrestling practice, that's even more so than, um, a meet. When you're talking about a wrestling match or wrestling meet, you're talking about two kids that are going to be all over each other. But just those two kids, you can space everybody else out if you, if you limit your rosters and things. But practices, you, you got thirty kids in, in a wrestling room and they're on top of each other the whole time. So even wearing masks, it doesn't, it's not going to be enough. It's just not going to be enough. It, it's really, it's the only sport where literally it's a penalty to be six feet socially distanced from your opponent. You know, so it, it's just, I, I just don't know how, and I don't know that anybody is comfortable with wrestling. I know that some of my colleagues are going to go to their boards and try to advocate for wrestling. I get it. I don't think they're comfortable doing it, but they're going to do it anyway. I can't do it. I just can't do it. I just don't know. And it, it, again, it kills me to take away an opportunity to kids because that's not what I'm about, anybody that knows me. I want to provide as much opportunity for kids as I possibly can. But I want to do it safely in the middle of a global pandemic. And I just don't know how I can do it with wrestling. So at this time, um, we're, we're not, um, proposing that we move forward with wrestling. And that's it. Happy to answer. Any questions that you have?
I'll put that to the board. Any questions? Uh, Jenna?
Okay, I'll start. So the first thing I want to say is thank you because I know that this isn't easy. As a sports parent, you know, with a kid that played a small sport, you know how that important that was to me and to my kid. And after missing, you know, his club season in the spring, he was able to play soccer. And, you know, his friends were able to play football. I just, it meant a lot to parents. And I think, I think you can see here that it means a lot to parents for their kids to be able to have any and all opportunities that they can right now because this is hard. So I appreciate the hard work you're doing and I know, I know it's not easy. I sit with you in that position in some ways as well. So, um, I do appreciate the hard work that you're doing to try to get our kids back on the field.
Thank you.
So I do want to talk about this policy that was made, um, in regards to the kids playing club sports. Because I have a kid that's always played club sports. None of my kids are affected by this. This is not a personal thing for me. But I know a lot of kids who are affected by this because, and they're, they're my kids' friends, you know? They're, they play club sports just like my kid always has. And I think the thing that's confusing to a lot of people, and maybe you can shed some light on this because I think it's confusing to me too. I'm just going to take a hypothetical situation. I'm going to use my own two kids as an example, even though it's purely hypothetical. So I have two kids. One's a freshman, one's a senior. Let's say they both want to play track and field indoor. Okay, so I have my daughter. She's really theater kind of whatever. So let's say she wants to try track and field and she's, so the other commitments she has during the week is she goes to youth group at church. She sings in a student band. She's, she might go off, you know, and maybe get a role in a community theater at the Palace Theater where they're doing this with masks. She has these other commitments that she's involved in. She goes to dance. So that's three different things that she's involved with. She can go and she can do crack and, track and field, no problem. So let's say my senior, he decides he wants to play track and field. Well, he's in a club soccer team and they train off-season, so he can't play. But he's actually exposed to less people than my daughter would be. But because she happens to be a theater kid whose extracurriculars besides this town sport is, um, happens to be theater. So I think people are having a hard time understanding how that makes sense. You know, or for example, my kid who works the Y and he works with kids when he goes to work at the Y. And he's running around for two hours with these kids at the Y, um, but he then goes to play track and field. Let's say he did. Do you know what I'm saying? Like people don't understand. And I understand that you said that the student was positive from the club sport exposure resulting in quarantine kids in the fall. But there were other kids that could have, that got it within sports things and it could have come from work or it could have come from a party, which I heard. I, you know, you hear these things in the community. So I, I understand one hundred percent your, your purpose, your reasoning behind it. And I don't think anybody doubts that your primary concern is protecting students and protecting people's ability to be in school. I'm just wondering if we could find another way to do the same thing without limiting opportunities for kids, something like asking parents to sign a COVID protocol, you know, contract or something that says if you're participating in any activities, work, list them all out, whatever, any activities outside of sports, we would ask that you do these particular things to protect yourself and your community within the sport to, um, you know, to, to help, to help get parents on board as opposed to saying, okay, you can't do this and this is what we're going to do. We're going to limit this because of you, when it wouldn't limit, like my daughter who isn't playing sport and it just happens to be that it's not a sport. But she's singing, which is supposedly more risky than a lot of other things. Do you know what I'm saying? I just feel like, I think parents, and I, I'm, I, you can nod your heads, yes, no, that's legal, school boardy. But I'm just saying, I think parents are willing to do what they have to do so their kids can play. High school sports, town, you know, club sports, the financial commitments, I think they're willing to say to their kids, sit them down and say, if you want to play school sports, these are the things you're going to have to agree with. Sit down, sign this contract with me. You're going to have to wear a mask every time you go to your club sport, even though they don't require it or whatever. But do something that allows parents to sit down and have a difficult conversation with their kids and say, you're going to have to make some concessions here if you want to do both things, but still allow both things to happen because I think you're unfairly penalizing kids like my hypothetical son who doesn't actually want to play track and field, but if he did, couldn't because he has to train with his, you know, club soccer team. But my daughter, who's gallivanting all over the world, sorry, um, can, can play. It doesn't make a lot of sense to people, I guess, is what I'm saying.
And listen, and, and I get that. Um, it, it's, it's difficult to paint with a broad brush, right? And, you know, what we're trying to do is to provide the safest environment that we can for our kids. And, and I, I know nobody's doubting that. If I were to paint with a broader brush, then yeah, we could take a lot of things off the table. The other thing that we could take off the table is high school sports. And, and that's something I don't want to do, you know, because you could, you know, and, and, and it, it's, it's, it's a difficult situation for everybody to be in and nobody is asked to be here in this global pandemic. But it's where we're at and, and we're just trying to do the best we can to, to limit the risk. And we're asking people to make some choices and they're hard choices. There's no question about that. You know, I, I would, I would ask your daughter to make hard choices too. I would.
But you wouldn't require her to make hard choices and I think that's what people are having a hard time with. Do you know what I'm saying? You would tell my son he has to choose, but you're not telling my daughter she has to choose. Now granted, this is hypothetical. Neither one of them wants to do any winter sports. So I'm just saying, those kids exist.
They do.
And I think that's from my perspective, and I think from the perspective of a lot of people, that is the issue. And I don't think, and I think it's not to say like, oh, well, we could just have no high school sports. I mean, you could do that too, but it defeats everything that you wrote in your presentation because you will push all those kids to club. And then the kids that cannot play club, because they can't afford it, will not have anything to do. So I know you don't wanna do that. There's no question, right? But I think there's a middle ground between canceling highs, all high school sports and making people choose. Like I'm saying, have parents sign a contract that says, these are the things you're gonna do. You are gonna limit your activities. So if my daughter, for example, wanted to sit and she wanted to play, I would have to sit her down and say, okay, this says if you wanna do track and field, you're only limited to one other thing you can do outside of thing. And you have to wear a mask, you have to do all these things, and you have to sign this. And if you sign this, that's what committing through, you choose. And if you wanna do theater and dance and sing on the thing, then you can do that, but then you can't do track and field. Then you're putting the ball squarely in the parents' courts and the family's courts and allowing them to make those difficult decisions. And it allows them to say, oh, well, you know, to my son, yes, sorry, you know, they say you can't, you can, you can't do that, whatever. I've already paid for clubs, so that's what you're doing this year, and we'll have to figure it out next year, you know, whatever. But I think, and I think this was a football thing, and the, I think parents want the decision to be in their court. And I understand, believe me, why we want it all in ours. But what I'm saying is I think there's a middle ground between, let's not have any winter sports, which please don't do that, nobody wants you to do that. And, you know, let's ma, let's make it, let's penalize the kids who have commitments. Cuz like, we're talking about kids who wanna do ski, but they've paid for AAU baseball. And they can't practice baseball, because they're gonna go skiing and their face is gonna be covered. I mean, I just, some of it doesn't seem sensical to people, is what I'm saying. So I would advocate for a middle ground, is what I'm saying. That's all.
So again, this is, this is a proposal. This isn't a policy that we've made. Um, this is a proposal that we are putting forth to the board. To, to make, so you guys can do whatever you would like to do with this, for sure. You can say, no, we're not doing it at all, or you can come up with a middle ground. Um, I'm open to any ideas that anybody has, um, to make this a safer environment for our kids.
Thank you, and I know you do. And I, that, I don't want my pushback to be in any way reflective of how much I know you care, that sports go forward and kids are safe.
Yep.
I know those are your two priorities.
Absolutely.
So can I speak, or do you want to send, real quick, I just have one thing to say, then Mark, then you. Um, I just wanted, before we continue the conversation as it relates specifically to this protocol, which is the one that many parents spoke about. Is that it is a protocol, and I just wanted to be clear, it's not a policy, because something like a policy is something that the board sets, so it's just a matter of, I guess, words matter. So I just wanted to say that quickly, and then I'm going to turn it over to.
And it's just a proposal, also. I wanna make that clear. So I just wanted.
Proposed protocol. There we go.
Right, exactly. So I just wanted to kinda reaffirm what Mike said. Part of the value that we've had, um, since this happened, uh, with working with the board as closely as we have since March. And you've come to every special meeting we've asked for, and you've deliberated everything we've brought to you. So, you know, each, we each have our roles, right? So our role is to provide you with the best guidance we can. Uh, it doesn't mean that we're all, you know, always right. It also doesn't mean we're always wrong. What it means is, this is a big problem. And, uh, you know, we've said all along, it's gotta be a community problem. And so sometimes it takes a community to help resolve it. So what I really appreciate is that Mike did his job. He came forward with a recommendation based on his best thinking, based on his experience. And it's a recommendation. And so I very much, I just wanted to affirm what Mike said, so I appreciate the feedback coming from Jenna, and I'm sure others on the board. And what's gonna happen is, we're gonna do what the board asks us to do, and we'll make as good work of it as we can. But if anybody thinks that, um, you know, these things are just, you know, thought up on a whim, uh, or, you know, intentionally trying to hurt children or, or take things away from them. I mean, nothing could be further from the truth. And if it seems to have that effect, blame COVID. This thing's gone on since March. Um, but, uh, but anyway, so I just would say, you know, that's what I appreciate about the opportunity we've always had to deliberate at the board. So we will take your challenge and we'll do whatever you ask us to do.
Thank you. Lori?
So I, Mike, I just have a question. So, um, the NHIAA, um, I, they said that there were no COVID-19 cases this fall from athlete to athlete. Is that true?
So, um, probably no, no on-field or on-court transmission. I think that is probably true. I know that's certainly true in Merrimack.
Yes. So, and, and that was like great guidelines, and I know people worked really hard, so I'm gonna just, um, reiterate what Jenna said. And, and I think part of, part of the concerns that I heard parents say is that, you know, I heard them say a lot of things. But one of the things that they said, they talked a lot about the social and emotional and mental health of their kids, and the importance of their kids being busy during this pandemic too. And the, it's kinda like the blinker before the turn, and so for a lot of parents, if, if they're in the situation where their child is talented enough and they need to go to a showcase, and, and they're looking to get a scholarship for a Division II college or a Division I college. They, they wanna have those opportunities, and so that's where I think it's, they just, you know, they're just fearful that their child are not gonna be able to have those opportunities to be able to, to play at a higher level, and, and we all know how hard it is to, you know, get that opportunity. You know, when I was a high school coach, uh, I just remember, uh, trying to get kids into colleges and trying to get them into, to be able to play in colleges. And I, we were very successful at that, but a lot of times it came to setting up those showcases with that college coach, and, and, and that's what I heard some parents say tonight.
Shannon, and then Andy?
Oh, I had one more thing too, but I'll go back.
No, no, you have this mic.
Oh, and, so I wanna talk about, I wanna talk about mask in basketball. So is there gonna be a special mask? Because my concern, when I read about, like, a lot of colleges, they're, they're going all over the place, right, with mask in basketball. And so one of the concerns are if they're wearing a cloth mask and it gets wet, then the microorganisms in the, in the mask, or if the mask falls off during a basketball game. There's this, so, there's so much, right, about, you know, if, if we're gonna not be able to play versus play, you, you're gonna wear a mask. But is there a special mask out there? Are they coming out with something to, to make it better for kids who are gonna have to wear masks during basketball?
I think the best one that may be out on the market, and, and it's really not great either, is the Under Armour one that came out. Um, and of course, it's an Under Armour one, so it's thirty dollars, right, as opposed to the CCM mask, which was nineteen ninety-nine, right? And I think that's a better model. Unfortunately, there isn't anything that is specific for basketball or any indoor sport. Um, I know our volleyball kids, and it's a different type of sport for sure, um, they wore masks all indoors the whole season. That was their choice. We didn't mandate that to them. They wanted to, to be safer. And so all of our opponents, when we played them, did it as well. And they were, wore the regular disposable masks, and they were fine with that. Um, I think we'll try to let kids make that, that decision for themselves. I, I, I would encourage them to have more than one with them, for sure, for that reason.
And if they fall, or.
Yep, absolutely.
And maybe just even, you know, as the season goes on and, and looking at the, you know, what, what's going on in New Hampshire, you know. It, it's something that can always be revisited, because, you know, the, the research I did on it, it's, it's all over the place.
It is.
And they say that, you know, for kids playing at a really high level, especially college kids, it, it does have an impact on their ability to play, you know.
So it, it's gonna have an impact on, on their cardiovascular ability, for sure.
Right.
Um, and this, and it is going to be the potential of, um, slightly diminished performance.
Exactly.
For sure. There's no question about that. Um, I think it, it comes to a point where is it better to have diminished performance or not play, right? And so that's, that, so that's the sacrifice that, that a lot of the colleges are making right now, um, a lot of the prep schools are making right now. They're being mandated in, in several states, um, across the board. We're not doing that in the state of New Hampshire. The NHIA has not mandated them. But we have decided as Division I athletic directors that this is the direction that we wanna go in.
Good. Shannon?
Well, I wanted to kinda play off a couple of comments that you said earlier, and then, um, actually I wanted to play off of something Lori just said, so I'm gonna do that first before I get stale. And that is that you're talking about disposable, um, masks for things like basketball. And I guess the question is, do we maybe stockpile them and have them, change them quarterly, um, you know, so many minutes of play? Those kinda things, so that we know that they're not saturated?
Sure. We, we, we do have a supply, um, so, so we will have them a bit readily available to the kids, for sure. And, um, most of the kids have their own multiple disposable, disposable and washable masks, so I would encourage them to have those with them too. We will have disposable ones as a backup if they don't have their own, for sure.
Right, but I think with the, the washables, they're, again, you talked about when it gets saturated, but if we know and we're measuring how many minutes they're playing. And then you'd switch out a mask so many minutes of play, cuz you know that you're gonna have maybe a sweat level, those kinda things.
Yeah.
Sitting on the bench, you may not get the same.
But it's hard to, hard to quantify that, simply because everybody sweats differently, right? So, so it, it's gonna be different for every kid. And so, again, we will have a stockpile at the bench for them. They can take one as they need.
Okay. Roger Federer never sweated playing tennis. Freaked me out a little bit. So, um, but, so I totally get what you're saying. Uh, the other thing was, it, I just wanted to really just note that it's, I, you're not really seeming to be acting in a bubble. You are definitely collaborative with D1 schools. It sounds like there's a lot of common ground, that you're doing some extensive, um, standards that you're all living by. So you know you're kind of, the environment you're leaving is comparable to the environment you're going to. Uh, so I do like to hear that, cuz again, you can only control the, you know, one half of the field.
Yep.
And so it sounds like you're all trying to live by that same standard, so that, you know, you know that, the environment in which you're playing, so that, that gave some comfort. Um, so I guess the questions I had were, um, when it comes to, you know, and, and you mentioned hockey earlier, and you're right. Um, I think those places that we don't have the controls, do they work with us a lot? I mean, you know, I think the local bowling, that's probably where we play bowling, but, you know, the hockey facilities, those kinda things. Do they actually say, Merrimack, you're coming to use our facility for your sport. What are your standards? And what, you know, what equipment should we have, what to live by, so that we're kind of meeting best practice from a, from NHIAA and your D1 collaborative?
Sure.
Baseline.
Um, typically, they don't do that, because they have their own protocols, and, and they're not going to, um, dedicate staff to, to our protocols necessarily. But that's where our coaches will step in, and our kids will step in, and make sure that they are following all of our protocols, even when they're off-site. So, much like we did during the fall, all of our coaches will be provided with hand sanitizer, masks, um, disinfecting stuff, so that they have it with them all the time. And they can follow all of our procedures, even when they're not in our own venues.
Gotcha. And, um, the other thing, I, you mentioned about, um, if players, um, they get a warning, if they don't wear a mask, and then they get suspended.
Yep.
If they continue that practice. Are you gonna be strict with coaches?
Yes. More so with coaches.
Good, because I, I think, you know, I was, you know, at a game, and I just heard not a lot of use by the coaches on the sideline, and that was disturbing.
Yep. Totally agree.
You know, leading by example.
Right.
And that's not the example we're setting here.
Correct.
So that was, that was a problem for me, a huge one.
Well, if I could just point out, the, the board cast a mask policy, which applies to everyone who works for, under the banner of the Merrimack School District.
Right.
So that's a simple one.
Definitely. So that, but that's, that's where, you know, I think we wanna set expectations now.
So one of the things that, that we did in the fall, and, and I think just like everything else, I think everybody gets comfortable, right? And then they stop, not intentionally, but they stop following some of the protocols as time goes on. So one of the things that we did in, in the fall, and, and, and we'll do it again in the winter, is I did have a preseason coaches meeting where I went over all the protocols. I will do that again with all of our winter coaches. Um, in addition to that, I have a thirty-six-page protocol document, um, that's more specific, not just the universal protocols, but specific to every sport, um, that the coaches have already received. So that they've had an opportunity to peruse that a little bit and give me any feedback that they wanted to for their particular sports. Anything that they wanted added as a protocol to their particular sports, cuz they're the experts on those sports. So they already have that document, so between that document and our meeting, it should be abundantly clear. And if I need to have a follow-up with any coach, then I certainly will do that during the course of the season.
Thank you. And then finally, when you were talking about D1 coaches, the other thing, I, um, couldn't read my note, and I finally got some clarity. But, uh, the, uh, are the other D1 coaches looking at your universal protocol, the one that got us all the, the audience and emails? And we have, we have gotten other communications. Um, have they also, um, looked at some of those same, similar, or same or similar?
So you're talking about this here?
Yes, the one.
So, so what I can say is that there are some schools in the state that implemented it during the fall. Now, there were the smaller schools, Division II, III schools have done this during the fall. As for Division I, there are, from my understanding, at least three other districts that are taking a look at that during this process. Goffstown, Bedford, and Hudson.
Okay.
Or at least that's the word from their athletic directors, so.
Okay, those are my questions for now.
All right, Andy's?
So, for, a comment first and then an observation. So in 2020 hindsight, and you explained why you put this protocol or this, this proposal out before we even talked about it. I can't speak for everybody on the board, but I think we were all surprised that this was out there, and parents came asking us for, how could you decide this without taking this consideration? So I think, what I think everybody is seeing is, we're now understanding why you put it out early, and you're now seeing us discuss it, right? So my suggestion to administration and the board is, if something like this happens in the future, let's get an emergency meeting of the school board together to talk it before it's put out as a perceived policy, right? Cuz I think, I use the expression, ready, fire, aim. That's sort of what this feels like here, is because something's put out. We may end up there after this discussion, but we don't know for sure.
Sure.
So that's, I wanna just sort of put that out there. When we discussed football in the fall, there was a lot of contention about, should we do this? I think my comment at the time was, it's not the kids that I didn't trust or feel confident. It was the culture and the responsibility of the adults around the kids. And what you described with the other, you know, club teams and things like that, it real bo, it really boils down to, the kids aren't gonna go out and try to do things dangerously. It's those that are in charge of the clubs, those in charge of the other programs, parents that are working with their kids. And I think the vast majority of parents have the, 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 the safety and the protocol of their, their children and their environment in mind. But it's not always gonna be the case. There's always gonna be those situations where, like, you, you, you guys are gonna dictate masks at school. Maybe in certain club ones, coaches aren't gonna be dictated to wear masks. We don't know. So I think my personal opinion is, is that instead of us coming up with a blanket, this is what the policy is. I really like, um, Jenna's idea of coming up with some sort of a agreement that parents sign up to do, saying that they will act as the advocate for their child in terms of safety, to take every precaution they can in other environments that they expose their children, their, their student athletes to. So that when they come into Merrimack, they're, they've, they've taken as many precautions as they can. There's no shangri-la. It's like working at Market Basket, it's like going and working at the Y. You can't guarantee it, but if the parents are on board and have a level of skin in the game by at least agreeing to this, I think that that sort of gives control back to the environment. I mean, the, I don't know how to really explain it, but I feel more comfortable that way.
So, and I get what you're saying. I, I think the, the concern that I had, um, and have, sent it around club and other sports, is not so much the sports. There's very little evidence that there's been any transmission within a, a sport, right? With the exception, like I said, of that one potential ice hockey transmission. It's, it's everything that, that, that happens around the sport.
The social, the locker room.
It's the social, it's the locker rooms, it's those sorts of things, um, that worry me more than the sports themselves.
Right, and to me, those are gonna be there, even outside of school. I mean, Jenna's examples were spot on. I mean, we can probably think of twenty others examples. But it, it's like, there is no mask mandate in New Hampshire, and you go to Shaw's, and ninety-five percent of the people that you see wear it. But there's five percent that don't, and that's gonna be everywhere, right? So there's a risk that we all take coming into this room, going down the street. So I, I, I try to look pragmatically about this as we go through. I'm sitting here thinking, we're gonna, you know, when we look at the numbers, I'm not worried about sports. I'm worried about, are we gonna have to make decisions like other schools are doing around going remote for education? So I say, okay, if we're all remote, does your risk hold water to, for the school, because everybody's remote? I mean, cuz remember, one of the things I said in football was, what if we made all the student athletes be remote, so that they didn't sort of cross pollinate into the schools? Well, if we go remote for a period of time because of the numbers, it sort of takes a lot of the steam away from some of the, the concerns, cuz they won't bring it into. it sort of takes a lot of the steam away from some of the, the concerns because they won't bring it into school. They might in this, in the, the team, but maybe not in the schools. So, there's so many variables right now that, that I'm trying to figure out in my mind if there's a way that we can accomplish what you're trying to do without putting the restriction in place. So that's my thought process as we go through this discussion.
So, and, and, and I totally get that. And that's the, the conversation that I have in my own head on, on a regular basis, along with the colleagues that I have in the other schools, is, is, and I keep saying this, there is no playbook for this. And so, we're, we're trying to do the best that we can for our kids and our community, right? Um, that's all we can do. And, you know, as Dr. McLaughlin said, sometimes our decisions are gonna be spot on and sometimes they're gonna be a little bit off base, but we're, they're coming from good intentions. And, and that's why I want everybody to understand, is that, you know, this isn't out to get anybody. This is, how can we do this as safely as possible? And hopefully, keep school open. Because more than anything else, I wanna keep school open.
Yep. No, I, I get it. And don't get me wrong, I appreciate where everybody's coming from on this one because there is no right answer. And we have to come up with the best pragmatic answer we can to be able to move forward. Because things will be, are gonna keep changing and, and hopefully we're gonna come out of this and we're, there'll be different protocols a year from now. Those, I don't think it'll be back to complete normal, but there'll be different protocols.
Right.
How we get from here to there is the question.
Yeah, I think, I think some of the protocols that we have are good protocols and, and good practices, period, in any time. And, and I think some of those are going to stick. Um, you know, the other thing that, that we, we, uh, I wanna let everybody know about is, yes, this is a proposal and yes, it would impact everybody potentially. But in some cases, I would encourage kids to stick with their, their club sports and things like that as opposed to the high school in a couple of different circumstances because right now, I don't know what the track and field season looks like. We have no venue to compete, none. Because you think about, where do we do track and field in the state of New Hampshire? Do we do it at the colleges and universities? And we do it at Phillips Exor? None of them allowing us in. So right now, we don't have a venue. Now, I've secured the Hampshire Dome for our kids to go out and work out, but you can't hold a meet there. So, so track and field is one of those sports. I, I don't know what it's gonna look like yet. Swimming is another. Right now, we don't have a lot of venues that are willing to host swim meets. So what is that season gonna look like? I don't know yet. You know, there's, there's still so many unanswered questions. Um, and, and we're asked to make decisions without all of those answers. And it's difficult. Um, you know, so in some cases, I would have encouraged kids to just stick with their club because I don't know what I can give them for a high school season.
So I have a couple, uh, things to say. First of all, thank you for all of the work that you put into coming here. Clearly, I mean, you're doing everything you can to try to get our kids to be able to play. You know, and be able, you know, we think, so many of us believe in the benefits. You know, they don't even, we don't have to go through and say all the benefits that, um, athletics and sports provide uh, to children and to the community. So what you, you're doing is you're trying to find a way where you're comfortable and in good conscience can allow kids to play. That's the most important thing, I think, for me to hear and see. So that's really powerful. I did wanna speak a little bit about the proposed protocol. That's, I actually support almost, you know, everything that you've presented to us. Um, a hundred percent except for the proposed protocol. That's the issue. That's the one place I have a little bit of an issue. And there's a few reasons. Because I think, first and foremost, I don't know that it even would help. You know, I don't know that it would help with the transmission. I know it kind of tries to limit some of the communities, but I'm not sure it really does that for all of the reasons. Because these kids, if they, let's say they don't play on their club hockey team, but they, um, choose the school hockey team, they still have those friends that are on the club hockey team and they're gonna probably still be around them on the weekends. And so I don't see where that's going to, maybe, maybe it'll help a little bit. I don't know. But I think what's even more concerning for me is I feel that it's very overreaching into people's personal lives. And that it's a slippery slope from there. And I think it, it, there's so many other things such as the examples that Jenna gave or, you know, the kid that washes dishes, you know, in his job. And, you know, the church choir in churches on a Sunday or Saturday or whatever, people go to church. You know, where they're around lots of people. It may not be a sports environment, but they're around other people in other areas and communities outside our school circle. So, I, I don't see how we can prevent our kids that are in sports from not doing these other activities while allowing others to do so in their, you know, other examples, like exactly how Jenna provided them. Um, the other thing is, how do you enforce it? You know, I can't keep track of what every, you know, we can't keep track of what every kid is doing and what sport they're on. You take their word for it. And I just don't see that, um, that that would really work. So I support everything that you've said. Um, I just, I just don't support this particular proposed protocol.
So, Sandra, do we wanna make a motion?
I would entertain a motion if someone.
Okay, so, I'll make the motion that we are going to accept Mr. Susie's, um, presentation tonight excluding the universal protocols for the new twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one on student athletes playing for other teams.
Do I have a second? Jenna, and one thing that, um, I wanted to, that I didn't get a chance to say earlier is, you know, I heard Jenna's suggestion about perhaps a contract, you know, being signed. I, I don't even know that we need to go that far. I mean, I think that, you know, at the age that these kids are playing, I think this is a chance for them to show and prove their own sense of social awareness. I think it's a good chance, because we are a teaching institution, to be able to work with our coaches, to coach them on how they can handle and be responsible outside in other areas and other venues. About perhaps maybe it would be in their best interest to their teammates to wear their same, you know, to wear a mask if they're playing in another sport somewhere that would be appropriate. And so, um, those are my thoughts. Andy?
So, just, I, I wanna make sure this doesn't get buried. By Lori's, Lori's, um, motion, it means that we're accepting that all the sports go forward and we're consciously saying that wrestling will not. So I just wanna make sure everybody's aware that that's part of it. Is that all the protocols on how we're gonna do the home, the away, all that stuff. Wrestling, we're not gonna offer as a school. And just to be clear, your intent is, is to offer all the rest, but some may not occur simply because you don't have a venue to be able to.
Yeah, so, so just to be clear on that, part of the reason why I presented all of them, even though I have a, a, a pretty strong feeling that a couple of them aren't gonna go forward, is that we still wanna provide some opportunities for those kids. So, I, I still secure the Hampshire Dome for track and field. And even if we can't compete in meets, I would like them to still be able to train, um, with their teammates on a regular basis. And the same thing for swimming, if we can't secure venues for them to compete. And there's some, some communit- there's some conversation at the state level, um, to handle swimming very similarly to how they handled the spirit of competition. So they're thinking about some virtual meets. And, and certainly we would be able to participate in some of those if that were, um, an opportunity that comes around.
And I think it also goes, you know, without saying, but I'm gonna say it, is that, you know, we, I think we need to reserve our rights. That as conditions change and as, you know, I think everyone can understand we're in very unpredictable grounds. And, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen as it relates to, you know, there could be a point where we just have to shut things down for two weeks. Or we could have like what happened in the fall where we have a team that has to be quarantined.
Sure.
And those are just choices, you know, that families can make for their families. On whether or not their kids participate in sports and what some of those risks are. And that would be one example of the potential of being quarantined.
Yeah, and I appreciate you saying that because we would handle cases that come up the same way that we did in the fall. So if we do have a case on a, on a, on a team, then we would shut that team down for two weeks and those kids would be quarantined for the, that amount of time. Um, and then we would try to get them back to competition as quickly as we can.
Shannon?
Yeah, I was definitely cognizant that we were not gonna go forth with wrestling for all the reasons you presented. Um, the other thing, I think, well, first of all, I think you just did my comeback for emergency board meetings. And so that's why I covered all the sports tonight. And by the way, brilliant. But on, on that note, I think, you know, we just, anyone that watches Friday night football, just to see our hometown guy, Jason King, do the, the show, even though, uh, we're not playing right now. But, uh, think about all the games that didn't happen because they had to, they had to forfeit in the playoffs. So, you know, keeping an open mind about what we can do, what we have control over. You know, this, you're being proactive with trying to mitigate risk. And I'm really appreciative of that. And so with that, you know, I thank you for being so, um, so comprehensive. And, uh, the other thing, I, you know, I know that for football at least, and I don't know if there's opportunities other times, they did a wonderful job for us, but we had Merrimack TV broadcasting.
Yep.
So, you know, for, for those who didn't have a direct relative, you know, I think, you know, whatever we can do to create those environments to be able to, uh, to broadcast some of those sports that can go on, uh, is ideal, of course.
Yeah, it, it, I can speak to that a little bit. I, I've been in communication with, with Mike Shaughnessy, one of our teachers in the high school, about how we can, you know, work through our challenges technology-wise to have the ability to stream more things more consistently without having to rely on Merrimack TV exclusively. We'll still tap into them for sure if they're willing to, to, to help us out. Um, but we're trying to find other van- other avenues to, to stream more of our events. It gets a little bit more challenging in the winter simply, again, because of the venues that we don't have control over. But we're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can to, to provide more opportunity for families.
Yep. Now, hockey has the barn cams and all that, right? So, not ideal, not, you know, ESPN levels, but something. Uh, but no, I mean, honestly, just the one thing I have to say with everything we've done, whether it be sports, whether it be academics, we try to be two steps ahead of the worst-case scenario and plan for the worst, hope for the best, and, and just take one step forward in everything we're doing. So, the fact that we're having this conversation this early on, I think we're at signups at this point and we're not talking about preparing for, you know, trios, first game, all that, and then having this conversation, which I think some ADs may be doing. You know, we're definitely so far ahead of the curve in what, in our conversations that we can prepare and, and adjust and refine. And, you know, again, but with the expectation that whatever happens at the end of this all, any cases can change, change your plan. I think you probably have a Plan B, a Plan C, and you've done that already. But just, you know, know that there's, there's always going to be that consideration in every, every day that we come to, to school. So, thank you. You, you have done your own work. Oh my goodness. Um, so on that note, you know, we do appreciate all that you, and again, you're present at all these functions and events and you're watching to, to make sure that we're all doing the right thing for the right reasons and following the, the Merrimack, um, standards of, of, of safety. So, thank you.
Are we voting? I was just gonna say, did you have something you wanted to say or do you wanna, is everyone?
I just wanna add one.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanna add one quick thing while you were talking about Michael Shaughnessy and Merrimack TV. Just while we're here, um, you know, in the fall, I worked with Merrimack TV to get all those soccer games, as many as the Boys Varsity Soccer Games videoed as I could. In part, because people wanted to see it, but also for recruiters who weren't able to come for college purposes. Um, I wanna just say publicly to anyone who's listening, Merrimack TV is willing to work with parent volunteers to get those thing taped. So if you're willing to put in the time, they are willing to work with you to do it. And, um, it's not a preferential treatment thing. It's an availability of volunteers and equipment thing. And Nick at Merrimack TV is who you would contact. And I highly recommend their whole team. They do a great job. And, um, I mean, we, we, I think, got almost all of the Boys Varsity. And, you know, without, without any other way for coaches to come and see them play, we had all this video and so it was great. So I highly recommend that for, it just, people just need to step up.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate everything that Merrimack TV has done and has always done as well. They're sitting back here right now, including this, so people can watch, um, this at home. So, thank you. So I, I think we're ready to take a vote?
I think so.
Okay. Um, all of those in favor of allowing the Merrimack, um, winter sports recommendation to go forward with the exception of the proposed protocol that we've been discussing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? The motion carries five zero zero. Thank you mu- very much.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And thanks to all of you that came out, um, to try to support something that means so strong, you're so strongly about. Thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is the discussion concerning opportunities and limitations regarding scheduling, um, with the high school focus. Sharon Putney, Rich Zampieri, and Peter Bergeron.
I just, um.
Sure.
So, well, um, while the team, so thank you, Michael. Uh, while the team is, uh, getting started, I just want to kind of, um, just set the stage a little bit. So, uh, at a few, uh, previous meetings, there have been, um, references. Thank you, Dave. There have been references to, um, concern that people have had about, uh, differences in the experience of students, particularly at the high school, as relates to remote and hybrid. And we've tried to, um, share, you know, over time with the board, um, the reason that, uh, things are, you know, the way they are. Um, but we know that it means a lot to the board. And so, um, we wanted to use tonight, um, in the context of the fact that we're gonna be preparing a budget, or are preparing a budget, we'll be presenting it to you soon, that in some ways is going to be, uh, a, uh, an answer to or, uh, a response to the challenges, uh, that we've all faced. And so, I, um, really appreciate Sharon and Pete and Rich for being here tonight because they have worked like dogs, along with their team and John, and, and, uh, to try to create a schedule that I think is far, far more complicated than anybody would really ever guess, uh, with more moving parts than you can even imagine. But, but also, remember that the high school schedule is always a complicated thing. And every year, it's this awkward thing because we're sitting before you in the fall, projecting for a new year, months and months before we've even asked students to give their first select choices. Uh, long before we know whether a particular elective is gonna be, uh, you know, really popular or not. Um, and trying to project therefore the numbers of teachers will lead and so on. So it's always a case that the high school schedule is the most difficult thing to talk about. It's difficult to talk about it early. And it's difficult to talk about it when it relates to money, uh, and budget. So this is an attempt tonight to just continue that dialogue and to try to explain, uh, the past so we can talk about the future. So, with that, Sharon, thank you.
I did include the handout just in case the technology doesn't work as we would hope it would.
Thank you, Jen.
Actually worked. Excellent. Well, good evening, everyone. So we're here to talk about, uh, scheduling at Merrimack High School. And, um, it seemed like the symbol of a Rubik's Cube might be a good symbol to use as we're always trying to figure things out. As, uh, Dr. McLaughlin said, there's a lot of moving parts to, uh, designing a high school schedule. And so, um, when I saw that graphic, I thought that represented it pretty well. Um, you know, with, with all the considerations that go into it, um, to making a schedule work at the high school. So there are going to be three parts, um, to tonight's presentation. And the first is really, um, about context, just kind of giving you information about how the current schedule that we're using, um, this year came into, came into being from the work that was done last summer. And so, Mr. Zampieri is going to give some information, just to give you a context for kind of just the backstory about, um, how, you know, it all came to be. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about the, the second part, which is our current reality. What are we dealing with right now, kind of living with the schedule that we have developed for this school year? And Mr. Bergeron will talk about, you know, what's anticipated for the future. Um, some things that we're considering as we're, um, thinking about next year's schedule, as we're preparing our budgets for next year, um, so that you'll have a sense of what some of the considerations are that we're looking for. So, uh, the first part is about context. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Zampieri. This is being a little bit, but if you hit the spacebar.
Well, good evening, and thank you for giving us this opportunity. Um, if I pause in the middle, I apologize. It's 'cause my glasses have fogged up, and I'm not used to this in this sense. Okay. Uh, back in June, the district endeavored to plan for the future of this, this school year. And there were many... There were many, uh, task force that were formed. And one of the subgroups of, uh, one of those task force was scheduling for the high school. And on that team was Mr. Fabrizio, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Mrs. Putney, Principal of the High School, Deborah Barker, who was the Director of School Counseling, Mark Merrifield, our Computer Tech Coordinator, Allison Spencer, a Library Media Specialist, and Bryce Williams, World Language Teacher at the high school, and, and myself. And, uh, our charge was to recommend a schedule with several considerations. The first and foremost one that was underlying all of the task force was safety for both students and staff. And I think that's where, in the end, we landed on a hybrid determination. We were also aware that there was going to be choice, that there was going to be, uh, parents who would like to have their children at home remotely. And there were many parents who wanted to have their kids in the building with those safety considerations in place. What we didn't know in June, as Dr. McLaughlin alluded to, was how many? How many parents were going to choose to have their students stay home? And how many were gonna allow them to come in? We had built a schedule based on the student choices for the twelve hundred to be in the building. And then our charge was to design one that accommodated that in either of their choices. And that's the flexibility of it. We had to come up with three options. Uh, a, a schedule that would allow for us to be in a hybrid model, a model that would then conflex to all-in if conditions were so good that we could have everyone back in the building, that would be ideal. Or in the case of the pandemic taking control, and everyone had to be all remote. So we decided that the, the way to, uh, implement this plan and have that full flexibility of pivoting in and out, even if it was for two weeks or a month, to go home and then come back, was a hybrid model. And there were three options that we sort of analyzed. First option was like, like we've experienced for years and years, an eight-period day. I think one of the reasons that we decided not to go with that option was feedback we received last spring from families, that it was very difficult for a lot of families and a lot of students to try and do the work remotely for five to seven classes. There was a lot of stress. So one of the considerations we had was, let's go with a hybrid model where we reduce the schedule during the day to three or four classes, no more for any, anyone, any one student. Okay? Another reason that we would do that as well is that if you think about a high school with twelve hundred students, its passing times. We wanted to reduce the number of passing times at any given day to reduce sort of the crowded hallways and maintain some of the safety measures that we've put in place. So now we were down to two choices, a four-by-four schedule, which would essentially mean that a student would either have just three or four classes for a semester and then go to other content areas for the second semester. Uh, and so there's pros and cons with that model. And then, and then the, and so I would say that, uh, after much discussion, um, some of the pros of that would be that you would be able to see your students twice a week. Uh, another pro, uh, was that if someone had difficulty in the fall, they might be able to retake the class in the spring and not lose progress towards graduation. But some of the, uh, difficulties or the cons that the, the group decided to talk about was, um, it's a drastic change to go from the current model to a four-by-four model without any training for the staff, any adjustments in the curriculum, to try to condense a year's curriculum into one semester. We were cognizant that if you had a AP class and you were in the fall with an AP class, that you would step away from that in the spring, and that's when you would have the assessments. And there would be a gap between the end of the class and those spring assessments. And a difficulty that was also mentioned was, uh, sequential classes, math, world language. Whereas if you took a, uh, class in world language, Spanish one in the fall, you might not have it again the next semester, the next summer, even the next fall. So you'd be away from that class potentially for over a year. We also, uh, as we had mentioned, found, um, students and their selections. And we were very fortunate that when we scheduled the original schedule in the spring, that ninety-six percent of our students got what they wanted. Now, because of the eventual model, we wouldn't be able to keep that up. But initially, we had that selection. And out of that selection, there were two hundred and eighty-one sections of full-year courses. But there were also two hundred and twenty-eight semester classes, electives. And how would we schedule, you know, four-by-four, that many, uh, either, you know, electives? We could do it through quarters. You could do art in the first quarter and technology in the second quarter. Or you could take a ninety-minute block, split it in half, and do the first forty-five, one elective, and then follow up with another elective. But that would increase, uh, passing times. And not to say, um, probably drive our guidance department crazy with trying to figure out how to do that, in that sense. So we ended up, um, settling on the hybrid model that we are currently using. And the, the scheduling is familiar with our students and our staff. They currently use that, they've been using that model for years and years, a modified block on Wednesdays and Thursdays. It allowed for us to, uh, to have that most flexibility that you could imagine in terms of going all remote or coming back and having everyone in and still having lunch periods scheduled in there. Um, and so it allowed for the greatest percentage of student requests to be met. And keeping in mind the, uh, sort of the information we got last spring about the stress that families and students were experiencing. And so you still were able to implement three or four classes in any given day. And we recommended three for the most, but every once in a while, there's a student that has the four. But for the most part, everyone had three in a study hall. The downside to that model would be only meeting a student once a week, which is not ideal. Um, but in terms of keeping the hybrid model, A cohort, B cohort, um, safety in mind, uh, we figured, um, with a lot of work of our department heads and other people in terms of designing, uh, the, uh, learning components of that class, that we could get in the complete, uh, curriculum, uh, as best we could, um, and really drilling down to the most important parts to be delivered at first in person and then, um, remotely. So some of the data and some of the numbers that we were working with, as I, as I noted, initially, we had no idea how many parents and how many families were gonna choose remote. And we gave them, um, a lot of time over the summer to finally make those decisions once they got more and more information of what the, the model was gonna be and what protocols we were gonna put in place. Initially, we were gonna run a hundred and seventy-two classes. Um, by the time that all the students chose to be remote, which was about fifteen percent of our population, and then we had to, uh, honor the requests of, uh, a number of our staff, it turns out to be about fifteen staff members, had to meet their needs, um, that we were able to, uh, drill down and offer a hundred and fifty-two classes in the hybrid model. One of the reasons that you had to lose some classes is that, as, if you imagine, there's a teacher that has eighty to a hundred and twenty students, say. If they are going to go remote, they are ahead of schedule, you're gonna have to take those eighty kids and find another home for them in another hybrid class. And that squeezed down the number of options that we could offer. And our first and foremost thought was offering, uh, the must-haves, that, making sure that the students that are getting classes are maintaining their pathway to graduation. So, uh... One of the other, uh, critical components of the teachers that went remote was that there's certifications in some classes. They can't teach a variety of classes. So if you had a life science teacher that was out, they could only teach life science classes. Or if you had an English teacher, obviously, they could only teach the English classes. So we, uh, strive to make sure that we met those must-haves in the pathway to graduation. And first and foremost, for our seniors that were gonna be remote. So we asked guidance for a list of all those classes that the students requested. There were twenty-one, and out of those twenty-one, six of them were gonna be planned for the second semester. So we were able to offer those fifteen classes to all of our seniors so they maintained their pathway to graduation. So in the back of our minds, those decisions about which classes to run were always based on, will it get the student on their way to graduation? Uh, and certainly, uh, or maintain for that, for the sophomore, they get their English ten, whatever it might be. Oh, okay. We're going to part two, apparently. Um, back to Mrs. Putney.
We're used to all sitting up here at the same time, so there's a lot of switching around. That's okay. So I'm gonna talk about part two, which is really our current reality, um, right now. So as, uh, Mr. Zampieri said, um, about eighty-five percent of our students were going to, the plan was that, um, eighty-five percent of the students would end up being hybrid students, and fifteen percent of the students would be remote for the school year. What we wanted to do, um, is in addition to providing those classes that we were able to offer remote students, and we've talked about this at, at a few school board meetings, but just to kind of reiterate, um, we were also able to offer V-Lax courses for students, uh, VHS courses, which often had, if, if they were science, uh, class also had labs that would be included. Um, another online, um, American School courses were also offered to students so that they would have those opportunities. And, um, also additional supports for those remote students. And, um, we've talked about those a little bit, and I'll talk about more in a few minutes. But as you can just see from the graphic, um, just different, um, pathways for our students to be able to still be, to be, still be moving forward, but through a variety of avenues for them to be able to make that progress. And of course, um, you know, there have been challenges this year, as you would expect. Um, and, you know, we're in, in the process still of making that migration over to Canvas. And we're already seeing just a lot of improvements, um, very user-friendly on the student and parent end. And we're getting some positive feedback from those that have already moved over. Um, the professional development opportunities are certainly moving this forward, um, at a nice pace. So we expect that, um, challenge to be, uh, resolved as we go through, uh, the next few weeks. Um, another challenge that presented itself, and, uh, Mr. Susie kind of talked about this a little bit, a little while ago, is, um, when all of a sudden we had quite a few students who were quarantining. And so we had the challenge of how do we support that number of students who would be typically hybrid in the school? How do we support those students at home appropriately? So that created some interesting challenges for us. Um, in addition, um, we had some students with technology challenges. They didn't maybe have enough technology or their devices, uh, maybe there weren't enough devices in the home. Um, Nancy Rose and, and her crew have just done an amazing job of, um, distributing all available devices to students, to really streamlining that process so that people would be able to make those requests and very speedily, um, be able to receive a device that they could use. And also that follow-up support for the device at home should they have issues regarding access. So, um, that is working really well. Um, another challenge that we've seen is, um, the students that are receiving direct instruction, um, seem to be, um, doing very well. On those independent extension days, we're seeing some challenges there with students who maybe, um, maybe their executive functioning skills are not as, uh, developed as they could be. And that's something that teachers normally work on with their students in class. So we're trying to work on some of those challenges through homeroom activities that we started today, as a matter of fact, where students are being directly taught, um, executive functioning skills and receiving some resources and tools through each of their homeroom teachers. And this is going to be ongoing over the next, um, couple of months so that students will be able to get that support and also build their skills at the same time. So we're really, um, excited that we're able to kind of tackle that challenge as well in a positive way. So I talked, uh, last time at the school board meeting about some of the efforts, um, that we're, um, making and strides that we're making and try to address some of those challenges, especially for the students that are at home. So we have, um, I've just given you kind of a sampling of some of the things that we've been working on. Uh, we now have some math tutoring services. We have some students, um, some math students who are very interested. They're in the Math Honor Society, and we have that information up on the spotlight. So if a student is having difficulty in math, um, their advisor can help match them up with a student, and they can be checking on them during their tutoring sessions to make sure they're making progress. We also have, um, as of today, some Skill Center links. So we have some, uh, learning support staff who are providing links to students who may need some assistance during a study hall or if they're home and, um, they're not sure how to solve a problem in different content areas. It tells you the content area and what times during the week, and the Zoom links that you can access. So all students are receiving that information today. And, um, also our remote teachers are providing extra help sessions for students so that they have, um, students have their content area, they know what times they're available, they can, um, email them if they wanna Zoom, they can make that request, and those teachers are available to students. Um, in addition, what we're seeing is that there are some students that just benefit from having a phone call. So our office staff have a list of students that they are actually calling in the morning to say, have you checked into Canvas on your independent extension day? Um, to Compass, not Canvas. Have you checked into Compass? Have you, what are you doing to get started today? What do you need assistance with? How are you feeling today? How are things going? And so, um, they're going through that list and calling kids. In some cases, parents have provided cell phone numbers of the students, and they're sending them a text or just saying, you know, let's get going, let's see how your progress is today. So that for some students, that personal connection on those independent extension days is really making a difference. Also, um, you know, students are checking in on Compass, and their homeroom teachers are seeing who's responding and how are they doing with their one through five stars of, um, just kind of, um, saying if they're having a good day, if they're having an off day, then the homeroom teacher is getting in touch with the school counselor. And there's another way for them to check in with students to make sure, um, they're, they're okay and don't, you know, don't need any other supports that they could provide. Um, I talked a minute ago about the executive functioning, um, sessions that we're working on, um, and the migration to... Um, and the migration to Canvas is definitely, um, going to be a big help, uh, for students just to, you know, know how to turn in their work, how to view resources and tools in there and, um, videos or anything that the teacher is posting for modules or assignments. So those are some of the, the current efforts, and we're really making some good progress on supporting those students at home. So, um, over the past couple of weeks, we have had about, actually about sixty requests for students to, um, who are interested in changing a cohort. And so these are the three, um, areas that students have been requesting and parents. There is a need for some students to, who have been in school as a hybrid student, to then be at home for a period of time, and there are a variety of reasons for this. But those students want to be home, um, but do require additional support. So the supports I talked about a few minutes ago are really helping those students out that are home for a period of time, or they might be home for the rest of the semester, learning from home and getting supports at the same time. Um, there are requests that are, um, to go from hybrid to full remote. So that would mean new teachers. There, there are huge ramifications with those changes because the student is not getting the same teachers. They would need a whole new set of teachers, a whole new set of courses, and that doesn't always, um, translate if that course isn't offered remotely at that time. And what we're finding is, um, that's a big change for a lot of students who just need to be home for a period of time. So, um, depending on what that current challenge is, most students are opting and parents are opting to have the students stay in the hybrid model, but just be at home getting those supports until they feel comfortable coming back in the building. And the other change we're seeing, but not as often, is students who are remote, um, coming back into the building for hybrid. What we're finding is some students really need to be in that building, they need that connection. Um, and so in some cases, um, that's something that is going to be positive for that student is to actually be coming into the building. And so we are seeing some of those, um, requests as well. And that moves us into part three, which is Mr. Bergeron, anticipated for the future.
Here we go. So our pre-enrollment, uh, process, uh, begins in February and, uh, March. And that also involves the incoming freshman class, and of course, that will be the class of, it's hard to believe, twenty twenty-five. Uh, so it's a, it's a process that we spend a lot of time on. Uh, department heads, our guidance counselors, parents, they're all involved in this. And, uh, everybody, when I say everybody, teachers are involved with this, administrators, and it's a, a process that's needed and necessary. Uh, and, and in that, as it says, you know, there are student and staff decisions. And some, sometimes these are very difficult decisions that are made, but in the best interest of, you know, the student. Uh, and of course, we want to have equity for the full remote and the hybrid students. Uh, you know, as we, uh, face the upcoming, uh, year. So future considerations, uh, integrated technology opportunities. It's a possibility of increasing the opportunities for students to access classes remotely in the actual classroom. Uh, and as it says in the slide, uh, technology, uh, for students, working toward one-on-one devices for students. And then additional staffing. For right now, sixty-nine classes are not offered by our staff remotely. And in order to, to offer those, we would need between fifteen and twenty additional staff members required to offer at least one section of those classes. In order to achieve a level of parity, their current staffing does not allow. This number, of course, would increase if we took away our V-Lax courses or our VHS courses. So that's, that's what I have, and I think I am calling, uh, Mrs. Pott.
So really what we wanted to do tonight is really to kind of show you, uh, the journey we've taken so far with our scheduling, kind of show you where we are now in preview, um, what's coming up. We'll be back before long, um, obviously, to, to present our budget for the next school year. All along the way, our, our goal has been to provide that pathway to graduation for our students, and we've kept that, we've kept that promise, and that's been our focus. Um, we know that it's, you know, not everything is perfect, but we feel like, um, it's been a, a good year, a solid year as far as being able to offer, um, a lot of opportunities to students in, in both hybrid and remote. And, um, we're looking forward to, to the challenge of next year and seeing, um, what kind of choices people make and, um, trying to deliver the best, um, possible education, um, for our, our high school kids. So with that, um, just wondered if there might be any questions from the board. Uh, Mark?
If I, just, just before that, so I just, I want to thank, uh, the team very much. So again, I, before the board, you know, asked questions, I just want to kind of set the stage. So, you know, periodically throughout, um, my time with you, which hasn't been that long, but, uh, you know, you've asked for transparency. You really want to know kind of the sausage-making a little bit more than maybe you have in the past. So, um, so that's what we're attempting to do. By talking to you tonight about, uh, the scheduling, the context, the reality, and the future, we're trying to show you, um, what, what we have been doing behind the scenes for months and months. And to kind of shed light on the fact that, um, it's always complicated, as I said earlier, uh, to, uh, talk about high school schedule and high school needs. But as I sit here tonight, I'm preparing a budget for a school year that I have zero idea what it's gonna look like, and nobody does. And so that is a real complication. So, uh, you, you heard, um, the night, tonight you heard, uh, a reference to staffing. Well, I can guarantee you, I'm not gonna come to you with a request for twenty staff. But what I want you to know is that, you know, when you actually do the work of, uh, building a budget and creating the schedule and so on, you realize that what seems simple, well, just, can't you just make it happen? Doesn't work quite as easily when it's in practice. So if next year, we're in the same situation as we are now, and I think we're all deeply praying that's not the case, but I, I never would have thought we'd be here, so, um, then one answer would be additional staff. That's just a reality. Or it would be such a stripped-down schedule, uh, that we would lose everything that's made us unique. Uh, but you could say that everybody in remote gets exactly what they get in, in hybrid. But one of the things that we've prided ourselves on for years and years is what, um, Rich was talking about a few minutes ago about this satisfaction rate. Um, we are unique among high schools where we give, we really, uh, we give opportunities to students uh, based on their requests at a very high rate and always have. That's makes, that's one of the things that makes us unique. So the thing to be clear about is if we, if we're not gonna hire twenty staff, what might that mean? Well, we could create a schedule that makes us entirely different than we've ever been. Do we want that? And, uh, however, there might be a, a third way. And so you were, in terms of, uh, the technology opportunities that, that are out there that we are actively exploring now. And in the next item, we're gonna even say just a little bit more about what that might mean. But, um, you know, the board's asked for kind of a peek behind the scenes, and so I hope this kind of helps to give a little sense of what it actually means when we're talking about, you know, consequences for the things that we're having to, um, to, um, put forth into eventually a budget that you'll all have the responsibility to review and question. So that's our, uh, one of our attempts at, uh, answering your question about transparency.
I see Lori and then Shannon. Oh. Lori, Andy, Jenna too. No, Lori, we'll start with Lori.
Okay, so I just want to, again, um, say thank you. Um, I know many school districts, when, um, Canvas was coming out, they were faced with one more thing to learn, we don't have time for this, and, and Merrimack embraced it. And, uh, it, it hit you really fast, and you had to do, you know, it was really flying the airplane while you're building it in the air and, and, uh, you know, so congratulations for all that hard work. One thing that, that I, I would think about, in, in some school districts, they offer teachers like a sixth block. They pay them a stipend to teach another class. And so as we're talking about, like, maybe we're not gonna have enough, that might be one place if someone, you know, if, if we could come up with a policy like that, you know, like, yeah, if you, if you, you know, you're, you know, need the money and you, you have some time and you want to, uh, you know, spend that time teaching another class, maybe a, a class that's different than what you're already teaching, that you're certified in or something like that, might be a win one, win. I know it's a tremendous effort putting all these pieces together. I think that you've done a great job. I really appreciate you guys coming tonight, and, um, I look forward to hearing the new things we're gonna do.
Thank you. Andy, did you? Okay. Any, any other questions? Oh, Andy?
I guess, I thought there were more. Um, I guess the only question is, one, one of the things, obviously, that we heard a lot of at the beginning of the first semester was the difference between the remote versus the hybrid. And, and the people that chose remote had a lot less choices. Um, as we head into second semester of this year, not, not looking ahead to next year, but the second semester, has there been any work that you've been doing with some of those situations where, um, to, to sort of given? I, I'm gonna say this wrong. I have a feeling that some parents and students were caught a little bit unprepared for the option that they were gonna have at the first semester. Have you done any work in preparing for second semester so they have more advanced notice about what, what things would look like for a remote student, since there's less choices and things like that?
I think that, um, because most of the students that are remote are remote for the whole school year, I think they have a better sense already of what some of those additional options are. Um, and some, some great things that have happened is some students that are taking the VHS um, and the V-Lax courses have depended on our school also for some additional support for those classes. So when they have reached out, um, we have staff members that have been helping them. We have a staff member who's checking on those students every week to see how their progress is coming and if they need any additional supports. So I think that we have put some things in place that have really helped to support those students with taking those courses. It isn't just kind of a hands-off, well, you're taking a VHS or a V-Lax course, you're on your own. It's, we know you're taking those courses, how else can we support you in the school? And I think that that's really effective. Um, we're still building that second semester schedule right now. Uh, but like I said, I think that the fact that folks already went through that process one time, I do think, um, that it's going to be an easier process for them for the second semester. But we certainly hope that people reach out with any questions that they might have. Anything else? Well, thank you very much for coming. Thanks for all that you're doing this year. Certainly have your work cut out for you all. And really appreciate you staying so late here too on a Monday night. Absolutely. Thank you so much. Okay, on to the next item, um, which is the summary of funding sources outside current or proposed district budget. Mark McLaughlin and Mark Shubin.
Uh, so that also, uh, should include John. Uh, so we'll get that corrected on the, uh, web when we post it, because John should be there too. So, uh, another request with the board and made of us, uh, was to understand throughout the budget process a little bit more about what are the funding sources that we're relying on that come outside of the district, um, the district current or proposed budget. And so, uh, tonight, we're attempting to address that question by, uh, by putting this agenda item here. So I'm just gonna start. John and Matt have, are gonna give a lot more detail. But I want to just give one example of, of something, uh, that is, uh, sounds like, uh, great, but, but, mm, is proving to be a huge challenge. So you know that we, um, were in receipt, as other, uh, districts were in the state, uh, for, of CARES-ESR money, that CARES Act, uh, that provided, uh, us with COVID-related, uh, money-related COVID expenses. And Matt will talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. So that's one pot of money. We're grateful for it, and we've, we've used it. And that was a boon because a year ago, when we put the budget together, we had no idea a pandemic was on the horizon. So thank goodness for that. There's a second pot of money, uh, and this is where the story gets complicated. Just under two weeks ago, uh, I was invited to a, a webinar hosted by the DOE uh, that, uh, talked about how the state has and will soon release a pot of money at a rate of approximately two hundred dollars per student. So for Merrimack, that comes out to a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. Now note the time. This is just under two weeks ago. So I, I went to the, uh, webinar, and, uh, you might understand why I was surprised to find out that that money needs not only to be expended, but, uh, anything purchased needs to be in place by December thirtieth of twenty twenty. So here we are, on the one hand, talking about how important it is to be planful and, uh, purposeful in what we do. Um, and it sounds wonderful to be given just over seven hundred thousand dollars, but it is the opposite of being purposeful and planful to spend three-quarters of a million dollars in about six weeks. Uh, nevertheless, uh, that's our challenge. So one of the things that, uh, Sharon and, uh, team talked about a little while ago was what are some of the, um, options that we can put into place that will create a more equitable environment for students, for remote and hybrid? Um, and there was, uh, some reference to technology there. So I'm not prepared to tell you tonight because it's too early for that. Um, but what I am telling you is that we are actively working to address that problem by using that money and having everything that we might need within six weeks. So you can count the challenges. Devices, availability. Uh, the infrastructure that would support that, able to be in place in six weeks. Uh, but I'm here to tell you that we are moving heaven and earth to try to make that happen. So the question that Andy asked about what next semester might look like isn't entirely possible to be answered right now because it might be materially enhanced by what we're able to do in the next six weeks. Uh, and so I'll be able to share more with you about that later. But I, I just want you all to know that, um, where someone might say to you, well, you know, Merrimack gets seven hundred thousand dollars, so isn't that cool? Well, it might be, uh, but, uh, it, it, it's a, it's a big, big, big task, as you can imagine. When we talk about some of the technology, um, improvements that we're hoping to make, uh, investments in with this money, I just want to, uh, kind of remind everybody about the Remote Academy, Remote Education Academy for Learning, the real academy that Bill Morris has now overseen. So we've said all along that, um, even if COVID were to go away tomorrow, I, I know, having been told by a substantial number of people, that they are, for them, remote has worked. We hear a lot about how remote hasn't worked. Uh, but there are a lot of people for whom it has worked very well, and those people don't want to turn back. So we, but we don't know where those students will be next year. Will they have Mrs. Smith? Will they have Mrs. Smith or Mr. Johnson? And therefore, the question of how to deploy certain, uh, devices, should we be fortunate enough to have them, will have to be much more universally distributed, uh, because we can't, we're not that good at predicting. Also, there are, um, opportunities that we might be able to afford, um, students who might temporarily need to be, uh, you know, out because they break a leg or something and they would like to be in school but can't be. And so, uh, and in the old days, you'd have to send somebody to mom or dad to go pick up work and bring it home. We're hoping that there might be in the near future, an opportunity to, uh, address that so that if you need to be home, it's a whole different way to approach your learning. It could also be that there are some students whose behavior is such that they're either suspended or it might be best for them to take a little break. And there aren't a whole lot of alternatives, uh, at the moment for those students and in some cases, being home for an extended period of time is really the last good thing that you could think of, um, and this might be an opportunity. So there is a lot to be gained from thinking about this a little bit more holistically, not to mention the fact that I have a personal goal to attract a good number of our students back from charter schools and homeschool because we have an, an available avenue to access our education, uh, differently than we might have in the past. So I'm trying to set the stage for you that, um, there's more to be talked about in the coming weeks, but, uh, that pot of money is one pot of money that we just found out about barely two weeks ago, uh, and, uh, we're moving heaven and earth to try to make it, uh, happen. So I'm gonna turn to Matt, uh, and if Matt could talk about the CARES-ESR money and, uh, related things and then we'll move to John.
Yes, the, uh, the ESR CARES money, um, is, um, really available until, from, uh, mid-March until September 30th of 2021. So that was the money we got a few months ago and we started planning for, we've been utilizing that money. The total amount was $392,000, which we got, of which, just in, in round numbers, you know, we had the Transitional Task Force to, to meet over the summertime and everything like that, that was really instrumental in, in crafting how we were going to attack the year and what was our game plan. And basically, you know, for my, my portion from the infrastructure point of view, what were, what was I looking for, for personal protective equipment, what could I put in classrooms, what would work, what wouldn't work, everything like that, is, is a wealth of other, other, you know, um, items that were discussed as far as curriculum and instruction and technology and whatnot. So, you know, people were paid for that work, you know? We weren't paid any extra for that work, obviously, cause that's our job, but we had teachers and support staff and administrative assistants on those committees, all kind of giving their, their input and information and expertise. So that was around $97,000 for that effort. Well, my, money well spent. For the, right now, for the computer, the technology end, everything like that, we're looking around $81,000 that we spent from the CARES money. The bulk of the CARES money that we spent was $2,000, $213,000 for personal protective equipment, all the portable sinks, all the hand sanitizers, all the, the Clorox T360 machines, the fluid for the machines, the, oh my goodness, all the masks, all the portable sinks, all the, you know, everything that we had to get the buildings in such a fashion that they would be, continue to be operationally safe spaces throughout the year. So that, that 392,000 is already, that's, that's spent. But the issue is, you know, Mark said we knew about it a couple of weeks ago, but I don't believe anything's gonna happen till we see the check, so we got the check last week for $735,000. And then, you know, you take into account Thanksgiving, you take into account Christmas, and I know when I was buying materials, and Nancy Rose knows too, when she was looking at getting computers and hubs and wireless and cameras and all this other stuff, no one had them. The lead times were astronomical. For me to get sanit, sanitizing wipes, my God, it was like six weeks to get those things. The lead time was just astronomical. And quite frankly, and I'll be frank right now, you know, to put this money on us and give us an arbitrary deadline of the end of December of 2020, I feel like we're getting running, we're having a game run on us right now. I do not like that. I spoke with Caitlin Davis from the, um, you know, Department of Education, and she says, "Well, maybe there'll be a waiver, but it's up to Congress." It's up to Congress? Really? I thought this was New Hampshire Department of Ed money. I didn't think Congress had anything to do with this. It doesn't make sense for us to get this pot of money and then have a deadline of December 30th. What is that, six weeks away to spend it? One of the suggestions was, and I'm gonna go a little bit further, well, take the $390,000 that you spent with the CARES money, transition that or transfer it to the $735, spend that down because the CARES money lasts longer. So, you know, that's a viable option that we're gonna talk about. So that, that's my opinion on this and, uh, you know, quite frankly, if we have to spend it, I wanna spend it in a proper, measured, meaningful manner. And even if we wanted to go out and blast out 500 grand worth of Chromebooks, there's no way that we can get these up and operational. See, that's part of the language that the DOE used. You have to receive the goods, you have to set the goods up, and they have to be operational by December 30, 2020. And that bothers me, so.
So what I would say, Matt's right, uh, however, uh, I told you that we are moving heaven and earth to make this happen and so everything that Matt said is true and it really is frustrating. It sounds like a nice thing, but it's really, uh, really more of a burden than you might think, but we have worked with Nancy and, uh, and I'm telling you that we are, we are going to have some good movement on this, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's the plan.
If I, if I could add just one more thing, if the, you know, this is something that we will do, we will do well, as we always have, and we will complete the task. So you can take that to the bank because we're gonna be there and we're gonna work it out and it's gonna get done.
Perfect, thank you, Matt. So then I'm just gonna turn to John because, uh, there are a lot of, uh, other funding sources, uh, that we've relied on for, uh, you know, a long time that supplement our district budget to get us to where we need to be. And so, John, we're gonna turn to you and talk about those.
Thank you very much. In my role of Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, I oversee, uh, two major grants that come in yearly. Um, one of them, I work again, her name's mentioned again, Nancy Rose, I think it's the popular name to say tonight, uh, but Nancy and I oversee, uh, it's called Title, Title IV Part A. And this grant, this grant focuses on student supports and academic enrichment in programs. Three major criteria for this grant is to provide students with well-rounded education. Think about UDL. Improve student conditions for learning, think about SEL. And then improve use of technology in order to improve academic achievement and digital literacy for all students. Think about technology integration that we've been up about. Some recent purchases, um, in this grant was we've bought additional Chromebooks, we've bought laptops for specialized drafting class at the high school. Again, you see the UDL theme. We've bought library resources that support all learners and you see where we're talking to improve conditions for all learning, um, using electronic discovery, a program called OpenView, and a program called Newsella, which we use for current events and, and news at the high school. Tools to support online learning such as No Red Ink, um, I believe this was mentioned, uh, during the budget message about integrated, uh, curriculums that work both in both platforms, both in person and online, and we've purchased two of those recently. It's called No Red Ink, which is a writing program we're using at the high school. And then Literacy Footprints, which we bought K through eight, uh, K through six, excuse me, for all of our, um, teachers to be able to do guided reading in a remote fashion. Another, um, another grant that we oversee is Title II A money, and these funds are used for supplemental activities that strengthen and effectively grow teachers, principals, and other school leaders. This is all about professional growth opportunities. And three major criteria that need to be followed for this one is increased student achievement and state standard, uh, state standards. Think again, UDL and SEL, converting those conditions and training our teachers. Improve professional growth and effectiveness of teachers, principals, and school leaders. Uh, we do a lot in the district with professional development and a lot of that is also, um, this, again, this supplements, this is in addition to, and we've used a lot of this grant to work with our EPEC, um, EPEC with our, with, um, our educational performance, program that evaluates our teachers and helps them grow. And then improving effective educators, principals, current practices, and the use of technology. Again, technology is woven into this grant and we've done many things with our mentoring program about technology and we've also done things with our torchbearers program. So some recent programs, some recent things purchased. We've, um, began before COVID, cognitive coaching is a way of helping us develop relationships with our educators and this is for all of our leaders in, in the district. We've worked with our leadership team, our department heads and our curriculum and all of our coordinators, both language arts and special ed coordinators, to help learn to how to have that collective collegial conversation with each other. Our report card development has happened through this grant. We've, we've done a lot of summer work and we've done a lot of work out, outside the hours and we've been able to, um, um, pay educators to come in on those off times to work with us to help develop our report card. We've hired a math consultant that's worked with us and done Envision's math and Big Ideas. Tomorrow afternoon, actually, we have 38 pair educators across the district. They're going to be learning about how to, uh, support Envision's math with a, with a, uh, with our math consultant and this comes out of this grant. Social studies, uh, ELA and World Language Committee work has also happened over the summer and beyond the school day that does this. And again, our torchbearer programs and our, really our onboarding of new educators and how we support them and grow them. And as you know, our educators in Merrimack come and they grow and they stay for a long time and that's what we're very proud of. And again, uh, some other grants that, um, beyond these two that really happened is, uh, we worked with Fern Sidon and she really did the, the, really the bulk of the work to just submit a five, uh, a $500,000 grant application for social emotional wellbeing for our students. This is called the Promising Futures Grant, uh, through, through the Department of Education. And, um, there's many activities that are involved in this. If we do receive this grant, we'll work with the high school, um, teachers to enhance executive function skills, and you heard Sharon speak about that earlier. A lot of the funding for the consultant and the books that we're purchasing are coming out of this grant that, that, um, Fern has applied for. And at the middle school, we're introducing, um, some life, life space training, which is really to focus on helping students present, um, their own goals and their own social emotional goals. And then at the upper elementary school, we're doing some mindfulness activities and working with their, um, their SEL team to try to, and their system of care team to try to put that in place. Finally, through this grant, um, Fern is going to continue our relationship with Cassie Yakli, which we've mentioned before, and working with some trauma-informed, uh, care for the caregiver and working with our parents in the community if we were to receive this grant. Then two other sources of, that I'd like to just mention, uh, in closing are, um, some things that have been going on for a while, and one is the Project Grow grant, and you'll all remember talking about that before, and that really started off our system of care work. And that was our, that was really our central, central to our program and it was really the seed money that got us going and we didn't really, um, have to tap a lot of district funds for, for a long time, almost four years of running that, that we were able to run through Project Go, uh, Grow. And Doc, again, Dr. Cassie Yakli is where we first introduced to her, and she was a consultant to our district at a weekly basis and worked with us. Our teams got professional development and training, went off over the summer in groups and went off, uh, multiple times during the year to create networks around the, around the state, all based on Project Grow money. And then the last one to mention is UDL. Um, I've mentioned it a lot, we've talked about it a lot around this table, it's become a cornerstone for our progress as we move forward when it comes to meeting the needs of all students. We have over 90 educators in this district that are receiving free training through this program, um, through the UDL network. Bill Wilmot, who you've met, who's been in front of the board, consults, um, you know, monthly with all of our, all of our teams and, and bi-weekly with all of our facilitators. I was on the phone today with him actually and talking about the future of UDL and Merrimack. Bill's also presented at faculty meetings, um, he's led our August Academy, and he's been a, a friend to our leadership team. And this is all, again, at no cost and through, um, a grant through, uh, through the Department of Education, so I just wanted to mention those things tonight.
John, before, can I just clarify, Fern's grant is $50,000. Right, right, okay, I thought, I think you might have said $500,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, $50,000.
So I just wanna be sure.
Okay. I apologize, there's those zeros in there, you know?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine. So, and, and just to, just to wrap up, uh, for people who might not know, these grants are not automatic, they have to be applied for annually and, um, they also need to be managed and, and audits, uh, are conducted on them. So there's an extensive amount of effort that goes into seeking these out by, outside funding sources, um, but I think we've proven that it's worth their weight because that is, those are, represent efforts that we can achieve that are completely outside of the, uh, district budget. And I finally just wanna point out, uh, that, um, so, you know, I've been here for 11 years and 10 of those years I was, um, in John's role, and I worked at those grants and the percent reduction in those grants over the years, uh, I, has been stunning. John's just, uh, reported yet another decrease. And so, um, you know, this is lifting the, the veil a little bit to talk about the challenges. So we're trying to achieve a lot, uh, with these supports, but these supports are continuing to be whittled away. But the last time I checked, uh, the price of consultants hasn't whittled away, the price of resources hasn't whittled away. So there is a, a net loss that we've experienced and so we're, you know, when we talk about budgets, um, you know, we're, we always, always, always are trying to keep the bottom line in mind, uh, to achieve the things that the board has always said it wants, which is good quality education for our students and be mindful of the, the bottom line for those who fund it. But when those outside resources that we depend on get chipped away at and there is an increase in the cost of everything, uh, you know, I don't need you to do the math. So anyway, um, that was, I hope, uh, some information that answered at least, uh, some of your questions around understanding a little bit more about outside funding sources. And we're happy to take any questions that you may have.
Any questions? No, okay.
Just a comment, um, and thank you, I think it probably comes from some of the comments I had in my budget message. And I think that there are some things we knew about, some things we didn't. Um, I know when it came to some of the federal grants that we've been going through, uh, regularly, uh, those are things I learned about from you and spending time with you, um, preparing for New Hampshire School Boards Association meetings where we met with our congressional delegation and the risk to districts when that funding doesn't come through. So again, you know, helping advocate for, you know, loss of funding is such an important thing we can do as a board, so, you know, in my role up in Concord, um, I can absolutely help with as well. But it's just, it's, it's a never-ending battle. And again, I think the other thing, um, is all that money is competitive and we're winning some of it. You know, we're not, you, you win some, you lose some, I'm sure we lost some that would have been great to have, um, but, but with all of that, that's time and resources that have to be dedicated to that on top of the, the job of running the district. So that needs to be recognized and appreciated, by the way, so thank you very much for that. But it's, you know, I think what's so important with, you know, putting that into my budget message was that we don't just take taxpayer money expected to cover everything, that the efforts are being made across the district in every area so that we can always look at alternative funding before asking the taxpayer for anything. So that was important to really vet, you know, and I'm, I'm glad we did this exercise tonight for that reason. So I appreciate the time you took preparing tonight and the time you take throughout the year executing those plans, so. So, thank you.
All right, on to number seven. So I wanted to just throw out a choice. I don't know how much time you need for number seven, but we are meeting on Monday. So we can either do that one tonight or just move it over to Monday because we only have one item next Monday. Oh, I'm sorry, it's Thursday. Thursday, Thursday, sorry, next week. Sorry. How much time do you need on this one?
It's just, it would be a first read, so it would probably take five minutes.
Okay, let's do it.
So, sorry. So, proceed, so the board approved the nondiscrimination policy some time ago, and we mentioned at the time that it's a pretty extensive policy, and it references a lot of other policies, some of which need to be adopted by the board. So, you know, we've been presenting steadily policies to the board. So this is the next one that supports the nondiscrimination policy that we put in place. And this is procedural safeguards, nondiscrimination on the basis of disability. So the district provides the following notice of procedural safeguards to parents, guardians, and disabled persons as required by thirty-four Code of Federal Regulation, Section one oh four point seven, one oh four point eight, one oh four point two-two, Purns F four F, and one oh four point three-six of the regulations implementing section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three. The district does not discriminate on the basis of disability in admission or access to or treatment or employment in its programs and activities. The district provides a grievance procedure with appropriate due rights process. This should not say my name. It should say the superintendent is the designated employee charged with coordinating efforts to comply with section five oh four. The parent guardian of disabled students or any disabled person may use the grievance procedure established by the board. Grievance procedure, parents, guardians of a student with a disability have the right to notify the above-designated employee with a complaint. Additionally, any disabled individual who has the right to notify the above-designated employee with their complaint. The designated employee will provide an initial response within ten days of receipt of complaint. The parties will attempt to work out their differences informally in a prompt and equitable manner. A written record of the resolution shall be made within ten working days of completion. Both parties will receive a copy of the written record. Additionally, the superintendent will keep a copy on file. If the issue is not resolved after the informal resolution process, the complainant may, A, request that the board places this matter on its agenda, or B, notify the superintendent of the complaint. The superintendent will notify the board if he or she receives such a complaint. If the board schedules the matter for a hearing, the complainant may be represented by any person the complainant chooses, including legal counsel. The complainant may present information through documents and other evidence and witnesses, and may examine the witnesses presented by the school district. Within ten working days of either of the above options, a written record shall be made of the decision. Both parties will receive a copy of the written record. Additionally, the superintendent will keep a copy on file. Procedural safeguards continued, I'm sorry, procedural safeguards. As required by thirty-four Code of Federal Regulation, section one oh four point three-six, parents, guardians of a student who needs or is believed to need special instruction and related services have the right with respect to any action regarding identification, evaluation, and placement to, one, notice of referral identification, evaluation, and placement process with appropriate consent form. Two, examine all relevant records. Three, at an impartial hearing at any time with respect to any actions regarding identification, evaluation, or placement of persons who need or are believed to need special education and related services, an opportunity for participation with the parent, guardian, and representation of counsel as provided under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, for a review process. And the legal reference is thirty-four Code of Federal Regulations, Part one oh four, nondiscrimination on the basis of handicap, section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three. So this policy was introduced in two thousand and seven. It was revised again in two thousand and nine. It has not changed, however, it's eleven years old, and so since we just passed a new board policy on nondiscrimination, which is much different than the previous one, we just wanted the board to take a look at this. I'm not, I am not recommending any changes to this, but to maintain currency, I think it's important that the board has a look and has a chance to, to review and recertify if it wishes to do.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for helping us stay on top of those two.
Sure.
Any questions?
So we are going to change the language and take your name out specifically?
Yeah, I'll, at the next, at the second review, I'll have a better, a fresher copy without my name.
You bet. Well, look how long you've been doing it.
Okay, we've already done Agenda Item Eight and Item Nine. We'll move on to Item Number Ten, in, which is Other, and the first item under that is Correspondence. I can speak that the board has received several pieces of correspondence specifically regarding the topic that we discussed and vetted tonight. Many, all of the correspondence we received was against just that one particular protocol that we've removed. We also had a piece of correspondence from a parent that just had some concerns regarding some of the challenges that her family is facing, and I will be directing the school principals to reach out to her to help address those concerns. Any other correspondence?
I, well, I had one from a constituent who had questions about something she saw on WMUR, and we just basically let her know where our policies are supporting that question.
Any others? The next item is Comments. Any comments? Seeing none. New Business, Item Number Eleven. Any new business? Dr. McLaughlin?
Well, thank you. So I just want to put on the board's radar the, the challenge that not just Merrimack, but districts are facing around COVID and sustaining school through the holiday season. So what I would tell you is that when I presented to the board on October twenty-eighth, I presented our recommendation for that, that time, and that, and that we've lived, lived up to. But at that time, I also presented a color-coded sort of chart that tried to describe the different scenarios by which we might alter our course. So we're currently in green, which means go. Red would be an example of a sudden change that's prompted by a sudden change of events that, like it happened at the middle school a few weeks ago, where we entered the weekend fine and then had to just stop everything. And purple represents a time where we can see a challenge ahead, and in dealing with that challenge, we can be planful about it. And I just am putting on the board's table that I am perceiving that we might soon need to be moving to a purple category. And that largely has to do with events that are happening kind of outside of Merrimack. So the chief impact that I'm referring to is the decision being made daily by other districts as relates to their closure for a period of time extending from Thanksgiving even as far as Martin Luther King Day. No surprise to you that many of our staff, K to twelve, live in other communities, and many of those communities have made that decision. Up to this point, we have not. However, many of our staff also have children, and their children will soon be remote. And under the FF-CRA, the Federal Cares Act, all employees have a right to seek supports for childcare. And what I am telling you is that as those individual districts begin to make those choices, it is going to impact us. So I'm not here tonight to tell you what impact that will have, but I think that I just wanted to put that on your radar, and then if the board wants to discuss it further, then I'm happy to do it. But I just think tonight I wanted to just put that out there because it's something, it's why the purple code exists, to try to forecast something that might be on the way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Jenna?
So I don't want this to take long because I know it's, it's late, but I just, as a parent who gets emails from two schools in regards to like COVID cases, and being on the board, I'm actually not aware of any COVID cases outside the schools that I get information from as far as like, just, so if there were three cases at Reed's Ferry, I'm making this up, I don't know, I literally don't know, but that's what I'm asking about. I was wondering if we could get like a once-a-week report of, okay, here's where we're at, you know, here's the cases we've had that are resolved. Is that somewhere? Do I just not know it exists? And if it isn't, could we have that available at least to the board, if not to maybe even members of the public? Because at some point, that actually helps to people to understand, like, you know, I know how many there have been at the high school and at the middle school because I have kids in those schools, but I don't have any other kids in any other schools, so I'm clueless as to, you know, there might be fifty-seven at Reed's Ferry, and I don't know that, obviously, that's not the case, but you know what I mean? I don't know.
So I'm happy to do whatever the board would, you know, would want, would direct me to do. It is certainly a known number. It's not that high.
Yeah.
But, so if the board wants that, I can easily provide it to the board.
If you could just maybe, if everyone's okay, create a spot on the website where it would be available to the public and to us. You know, we're all in it together, so I would say, you know, if it's something that's available and we're tracking. Andy?
The data's actually there. On the state of New Hampshire website, the, the newhamshergo gov, you go to the COVID-19 page, there is, on the top tab, you pull down, and it talks about resources for school. You go to the school page, the very first link is a dashboard that lists every individual school in every town in the state, and how many COVID cases they've had that are current, how many are past. It's, it's sort of their way of tracking whether there's outbreaks happening. So it's delayed by a little bit. It doesn't report immediately, but it's, it's up to date. Like, I don't know, I haven't looked recently, but like, for example, it showed Merrimack with, the high school had seven historical ones, but none current at that point in time. So you can look at, right down to the individual school level as to what was there.
Perfect, maybe that's all I needed. I knew they did it by town, I didn't realize it broke down to school. That part I didn't have.
You, you can select by town, and if you select like Merrimack, it will list all the schools in Merrimack, including Gate City Charter and things like that.
Perfect.
I have seen that, but in the case that it's delayed, maybe we could still just get it up so that our community can see it rather than...
Andy is completely right that it's there, and it's, it's a very good resource. And he's also right that the delay, and again, no critique, but there's a lot of stuff that's, you know, being downshifted to the districts. So here's another one. We used to, up until a week ago, be able to rely on DHHS to do contact tracing, which, because, you know, we're teachers, but now they have pretty much said that they are not able to keep up with it. Understandable. So I don't know that we're a lot better able to keep up with it, but we don't have any choice. So oftentimes, our numbers are, I anticipate, are going to be more accurate quicker than those numbers, though up until last week, they, it was a very good reliable resource, and Andy's right about it. So all the more reason, what, what the state is doing is relying on districts to give them information, and we've been doing scads and scads of work, you know, our nurses, you know, and Melissa Gagne and everybody to do that contact tracing. So, so we can certainly...
And we've seen issues. We haven't always, we've had discrepancies in the past with the state information, even though we may have reported it. So I think we're better off just going with our, with our own numbers.
Okay, you can do it.
But it wouldn't hurt to put a link to that site, so if folks want to kind of link over to the state site, they can kind of comparatively see.
Yep.
If that works for everyone.
And you can get a sense from about other districts.
Thank you, Jenna. That was a great suggestion. All right, committee reports, number twelve. Anyone have any committee reports? Shannon?
Professional Development met on the twelfth, and I need to put my glasses on because I can't see squat on this phone anymore without that. So started with going over certification planning, and I believe it's a twenty-twenty-three cohort that they're working on as well. The individual professional development plan goals are due at the end of the month, and they're going to be making an early December to audit them. Nancy Rose went over the technology portion of the agenda in the Canvas Workshop on November second that was held, that I think we got a lot, a little taste of tonight from the high school presentation as well. And obviously, that's going to be a, a big play into how we, how we're doing things going forward. And then...
I'm sorry, I just hit the phone.
Yeah, that's all right. There's like a busy signal, so. Let's see, so, and then the big new businesses, special project proposals, so three schools came up with those, the high school, the upper elementary, and Thornton's. And then, of course, are always putting out to their membership any skill-building professional development content that they would be looking for throughout the year, and I think they even do it over the summer, if I remember correctly, from, from even the end of the school year normally, for my last time on professional development, that they even offer some stuff over the, over the summer. And then just giving credit for those activities that were done. So did I miss anything, John?
No, thank you. Very good rendering.
Good.
Any other committee reports? Moving on to public comments on agenda items, I'll turn it over to Shannon, who's been monitoring our email.
Right, so these are, we did get four emails for public comment for agenda items, but one of them was at the, our meeting tonight presented, so we wanted to defer to her actual words on camera, and we will go with that. So again, as Reginald Peery said earlier tonight, if I pause, it's because I fogged up. So we'll start with Zach Medlock, thirty-four, Fairway Drive. Dear Merrimack School Board members, I asked this be read as public comment at the school board meeting on November sixteenth, twenty twenty. Let me preface by saying I am a nationally certified athletic administrator, have served as an athletic director in New Hampshire and Alaska, am an adjunct instructor of sports management, and am currently a building-level administrator. In all of these roles, I would never put forth this type of mandate to my students. New for twenty twenty-one, student athletes that make the roster of a Merrimack High School team are prohibited from playing on any other team, including a different sport outside of the Merrimack High School. This includes MYA, club teams, AAU, outside tournaments, showcases, et cetera. This rule is in effect for the duration of the athletic season. Failure to abide by this requirement will result in the athletic, the athlete's removal from the Merrimack High School athletic team. I am also the father of two current high school students who have been given new rules for participation beyond the scope of NHIAA and COVID mitigation a month before the start of the winter season. People plan their lives based on a set of rules. COVID has certainly changed that, but this policy for the unaware athlete places them in an unbelievable position of having to make a decision about how they spend their time out of school. NHIAA policy limits the role that non-school organizations have in the lives of our athletes. I would never allow my children to break those rules. Priority during the season must be given to the high school team. When this was brought to my attention by my wife, I was dumbfounded. It's a bad policy in both the time of COVID and in other times. It lacks transparency and rationale. I would never support such an edict in my athletic department, but if I was forced, I would make sure people knew it was manifesting in a timely manner, not shortly before the start of the season. Schools are about kids, this does not support kids. Thank you for all that you do in the service of our children. May better choices be made. Warmest regards, Zach Medlock. Okay, that was an attachment, so I have to go back to my email, go back again. The next is Mark Roy, twelve Mountain View Drive, and says, Dear Board members, I'd like to offer my opinion to the latest knee-jerk reaction to the COVID-19 situation and participation in outside athletics, workouts, showcases, et cetera. Look, these kids have been impacted in ways that most of us will never understand. Last year, we didn't have a graduation, and spring sports were canceled altogether. This year, we have a hybrid school motion that is working, but what, but not what we would all like for our developing teens. Now you are looking to limit their opportunities, or better yet, force them to choose between school athletics and their potential growth by developing their craft through outside participation. Sorry, but this is a myopic and flawed approach to a problem that will not have any great effect on any potential outcome. For example, right off the bat, the statement athletes that make the roster, not sure how long it's been since any of you had children in the high school, but the reality is, we already know who is going to make the rosters. This isn't rocket science beyond academic or other disciplinary issues. The rosters from last year containing return players will virtually be the same. Given the flawed statement above, an athlete can participate all they want in outside athletics up to the rosters are posted. So in essence, they can attend tryouts, offseason workouts, and captains' practices all the way up to the rosters being posted. Flawed. You can see this isn't going to work and will be a paper rule that's been instituted by people who think that they have, that they represent the best interest of the tax-paying parents and student athletes. I guess the part that worries me most is what's next? Play an outside sport, and you can't go to school, or better off, or better yet, if you have contact with anyone outside of Merrimack, New Hampshire, you can't go to school. Let's take a deep breath and not try to limit our children any more than what is absolutely needed in error on the side of allowing our children to continue some normalcy. Regards, Mark Roy. And then the third is Charles Dodana. And he is, and Maura Dodana at fifty-eight Eric Street. Dear School Board Members, I'm writing a response to a new policy just instituted at Merrimack High School regarding the prohibition of student-athlete concurrent participation on a club travel team and an MHS team. This policy just levy, just levy is unacceptable under any circumstances for a variety of reasons. Financial commitments. Many families have already paid for club team participation in full and cannot receive a refund for this reason. If you're going to institute this rule, there should have been ample notice to avoid a financial loss. College placement. Many student athletes preparing to be collegiate athletes need to play on additional teams to gain the necessary skill and playing time in their sport to compete at the college level. Denying them the opportunity to play for their school and a club team places them at a disadvantage in the recruiting process. Emotional distress. The student athlete has already had much taken from them by the COVID pandemic as sports seasons have been cut short or canceled, which has been painful for them. You are forcing students to make a very difficult choice that adds to their misery. Gross overreach. A student athlete's participation on a club travel team or travel team is not the purview of MHS. If students have a conflict, they take it up with the coach and should provide preference to their school team. But quite frankly, I'm appalled that you or the school think you even have the right to do this in the first place. It is a gross overreach of your position to place this unfair restriction on these athletes. Club programs keep kids engaged and physically fit. The fact that you would prohibit that is extremely short-sighted. Excuse me. Unfair application of policy. If you apply this type of policy to student athletes, you are going to create a policy for students who work, participate in and out of school clubs, congregate in large groups outside of school, or volunteer in the community. They all have an increased risk for COVID infection. Where does this end? If the school has a mask mandate and social distancing, I'm unsure how this helps the situation and seems incredibly punitive to the student athletes. Given this terrible choice, my kids will not participate in MHS sports and pursue club more aggressively. I am formally requesting that this letter be read at the upcoming school meeting tomorrow night. Regards, Charles Dodana, Maura Dodana. And those are the three. And of course, the fourth is read by the author herself. So thank you.
All right, thank you. So with all of that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, made by Andy, seconded by Lori. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries five zero zero. We'll go ahead and sign the manifest. Thank you and good night.